Before Karen, my chair, before we get started. May I have an acceptance of the call, means the order may have acceptance of the agenda? Somebody by Karen Connolly, second by Andy Goodrich, we have to do a roll call. Ms. Karen? Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
The reason why we're doing that is because we have a remote participant and I also want to let folks know that our town administrator tonight, Jim Begrone, will not be with us due to some personal schedule that was prior to. I also am going to read our commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion. The Citrus Select Board is committed to providing an environment that respects our meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner, even if it is a disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minorized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. So with that, are there any walk-ins this evening? Hi.
Hi.
Is your name and address, sir?
Sure, my name's Wayne Hoover, I live on 34 Lighthouse Road, Michigan. So I know in the last town meeting we brought, as a community, brought the idea that the seawalls are deteriorating in certain areas, some more than others. And I know that there is ongoing work that's being done. But I wanted to bring something in particular to note to everyone. It's referring to the 18.6 year lunar cycle. And I think, you know, to kind of just make it simple, we know that there's gravitational pull, you know, that occurs from circulating of the earth around the sun and then the moon around the earth. And there's gravitational pull, well, for 18.6 years, there's a cycle where the influence of that gravitational pull doesn't really have that big of an effect, but we're coming to the end of it, which means that when we come to the end of it, which is going to be 2025, one year from now, gradually, that gravitational pull is going to make the tides appear higher. And even with global warming, we all know that that's a place that's going to accelerate the high tides that we're experiencing. And so I'd really like to, you know, bring that to the attention of the town and to find out, you know, I know that there was money appropriated, there's approximately $2 million that was appropriated back in 2015 to where we are in 2023. Just want to see where we are, you know, with that, you know, consultants, engineers that are putting together those plans and, you know, what is being done at this time to address it, just so that we're more proactive, knowing that the cycle is about ready to settle.
Absolutely, so somebody from your association comes to every meeting. Unfortunately, we weren't at the last meeting where we did award a contract to start designing to prepare for that particular aspect of the point. I don't know if you're aware, but there's a very comprehensive coastal analysis that was done years ago, which I'm sure that Miller-Tide situation was most likely addressed. So we have signed the contract, we're moving forward with that. We are very well aware of the risks there, and the board is very supportive of any emergency services that need to happen. This weekend during the Mass municipal association, our governor actually called out climate change. So I think she also understandably is starting to understand a little bit better with regards to what's happening on the coastal towns, especially since the last couple of storms, the last few weeks. So that's great, so we're hoping that with her increased focus there, hopefully she'll get her different departments to move a little quicker, because right now we are saddled with lengthy permitting times, that's a way to pay our repairs, as well as getting financing quickly and assistance from the state. So hopefully that's good news for you, you know, that we move forward with the, you know, the awarding of the contract and.
And is there a timeline associated with that contract, you know, meaning milestones of what they're supposed to accomplish within a certain timeframe? I know the permitting is obviously a challenge for the state beyond all that, I think, or found that out maybe in the partway. But is there a timeline in regards to what they have been assigned to do?
Yeah, I cannot, Kevin, you speak to like when we expect the first design to come back or how that would work?
Sure, we're going to, remember the engineer, the engineers already looked at the area. They'll do an evaluation, we broke the RFP, two sections, do some temporary repairs on any sections of the wall they think are in bad condition.
Sure.
So that we can do something, but remember, our good wildcat is permitting. We don't allow a lot of permitting take, we've been working for over three years on permits just a thousand yards down the road with the DMC wall project where the state gives money to reclaim them all.
Yeah.
And we're still floating around because they're having to charge me and doing a whole bunch of things, so.
Is that even for the temporary, you know, repairs that need to be made, is that, are those permits accelerated at all or are they still under the same?
It's kind of under the same, same slow setup, because we have to stay within the footprint of the wall and one of the solutions is potentially adding stone in front of the wall that we spoke about with different things and that changes the footprint. So that trips a lot of different organizations, so we have to get involved with the government to get approvals. So unfortunately, it's slow, it's not easy, there's milestones. We, we factored four different consultants and we decided to go with a consultant that is continuing on with the DMC wall, walls up the road, so they had to continue it on and they didn't learn, gone for the permits area, included five of them, but that's where we are. So, so they're there, it's just, it's going to be a small. Yeah, and the other thing is too, remember there's some snow, ice and everything else, we've got to get the area a little better off so it's safe to get people out there to kind of walk around.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. All right, any other walk-ins this evening? No, okay, there being none, I'll go to the first scheduled item, we don't have a report administrator this evening. So the first one is to discuss and vote DPW contracts, you're Kevin, you want to come on up?
Sure. I'll join me.
Sean?
Hey, no one, good evening.
How are you?
Okay. So our first contract is just revised for capital paper. Nancy's a stick one, she's very good, but if you recall, it was only one year, this is to make it a three-year contract, so we can use. So it's just a minor revision.
Okay, and this is for both the transport and also the actual recycling, so it's.
Correct. Full service.
Okay. Any questions, so the contract is for $450,000 to extend it for an additional two years, but not the one that we already have. Any questions? Karen, so in other words, it's costing us 150,000 more on top of what have we gone year to year? If it's going from 100,000 to 450, that's a three year.
The 450, it doesn't matter what it is, we have unit prices set up, that's the amount of material that we take. So we pay X dollars per ton of material or depending on the market, sometimes we get money back. So it's, it's a value not to exceed.
So it'll give us room if given prices adjust, or if we can obtain a rebate, we'll spend less, but it does vary year to year.
All right.
How much we spend.
Well, because I will get three years, might get 300,000, and then I see a three-year contract warranting 50,000, and it's like this, so.
Right, we figured it's based on some indexes and the index will increase over a three-year period offshore, so that's the 50.
Okay. Thank you. Karen Canfield, do you have any questions?
Kevin, what was the actual, the most recent actual or 12 month?
So last year we did 120,745 dollars.
And what was the, what was the not to exceed, do you know that?
Oh, you mean prior, the prior.
Yeah, for the last.
I don't think, I think when we awarded the last contract a few years ago, we didn't put not to exceed number, we left it open.
Yeah, because I had the same questions that Ms. Connolly had was like, it just, you know, for, you know, it just seems like an awfully high cap and I was, I just needed a little more understanding of that.
So obviously if we don't have as much material going in, the cost will be down. It's just, it's trying to get the upper limit and the cost keep increasing, so we could be at that upper limit.
And what did we budget for this year, for the 25?
It's part of our hauling, so it's also the C and D's mixed in with all our waste, so I don't have that number up top like that.
Okay, well, we might want to think about that when we review all the budgets. Thanks.
One question, you mentioned the cost increasing, I thought it was a rate. Are we getting a rate for each year?
They have, they have 30 days at which time they can change their rate, 30 days.
Each year they can, they have 30 days to change the rate and then we have.
At any time, they have 30 days.
Oh, at any time, they have 30 days.
And I was the one who asked Sean to go up to 450, because we're averaging around 120, 126, 112 in the last three years. So I just wanted a little room to play.
Yeah, that would be 360 and we're 430. Yeah.
Any questions?
You know, well, just an observation, so in which case if we're talking about a not to exceed number, the motion should include that language, should it not?
It's in the contract itself?
That it's not in the motion.
The motion include unit prices?
No.
I think it's confusing because we didn't get.
Can our back put that in the motion?
Yeah.
So all we got that hamper you Nancy, if we put that in the motion, not to exceed 450,000?
The not to exceed 450,000 is what's in the contract and I fully support that they gave in the motion.
Okay. All right. All right, so make motion?
Move that the select board revise their vote for capital, I'm sorry. Capital paper recycling from the January 9, 2024 meeting from 100,000, not, and not to exceed 450,000 to extend the contract to the mission of two years.
Motion by Andy Goodrich, second by Susan Harrison, roll call vote. On Ms. Karen, yes, Mr. Goodrich?
Yep.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Vote passes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next one, our famous discussion. GZI and GZA.
And Third Cliff.
And Third Cliff.
Yeah. I generated a small, I don't know.
Thank you, thank you, you had a guess.
Personal one.
Exactly, that's what I wanted.
That talks about Third Cliff was damaged in four, all four of the clay storms that we've been dealing with, which runs from Peggydy Beach all the way to the southern tip, right about here, and here's the spit. We had all the topography flown, repair plans prepared, I'm going to give you a little history here. Presented the plans to the agencies. After the first meeting, they came back and wanted an alternatives analysis, which then was generated, showing options to repair the revetment in different ways around the whole cliff. At our current, or actually after the MEPO was submitted, three of the five or six agencies came back requiring a nourishment component. Our consultant was a little unsure in where they were talking about placing nourishment, so they did come up with three locations along here, and Seth, if you advanced those slides. These were conceptual ideas, trying to get information from the agencies on what they were going to be looking for, where did they want to see nourishment. Repeatedly, I've tried to separate the projects from repairing the revetment and providing mitigation. Last October, we met all of the agencies onsite and walked the site, and the discussion went from beach nourishment to really habitat restoration. So we know we have a Plover inspection out on the spit. So I don't have a sketch of where we look at providing mitigation for habitat. Go back to the first one. But after we walked out there, basically the mitigation would be above the high tide line, one more.
Oh, okay.
Back to the first one.
You have a line step.
The first one you have.
So the proposal in front of you from GZA is responding to the agency comments at the October meeting onsite.
So does it address these particular areas that are all triangles in our?
No, that was GZA trying to determine what the agencies were looking for for beach nourishment. And then we ran into a problem where we had marine fisheries saying.
Taking away habitat.
Yeah, juvenile cod in the intertidal zone and mass wildlife saying we want it for the birds. But you can't meet the slopes of beach nourishment and habitat restoration, it puts you in the water. So those two agencies were not getting an understanding of the project either, that's why we had that meeting. After we walked the site, they were interested in the first path back towards the cliff and they haven't established a size or an estimate for that. And that's where the sediment sampling comes in, put the same type of material up there, similar to a beach nourishment project. And it'll be above the high tide line and most likely not be impacted by your daily storm. And that will come out as they do their analysis and make the presentation.
So just for clarification, this is the actual area that the project will be designed for?
This new additional contract is where their focus will be.
Right, right there.
Correct. We do have some private properties to cross to get out there. So there will be some, a butter interaction for access easements to cross that.
And where's the 229,000 coming from what bucket?
2018.
Yeah, in 2018, we, at the time we approved 4 million dollars for premium design and engineering for the product. And we're still in the first 500,000.
Okay. Anything else, Sean? All right, so this is, this portion of it too would also be 75% reimbursed, all for FEMA and not told completely.
We don't know.
They won't tell us, FEMA doesn't know.
Since it's being.
So the 229 is the full amount?
It's a full amount, since the state agencies are demanding it in order to provide permit or consider a permit, our consultant is documenting all that, so we go FEMA to say, well, we couldn't get a permit because we had to do X, Y, and Z, in which case they're hopeful that this is not going to pay the 75%.
And that's not the cost worked, that's just the cost to be in the area.
Right.
Questions? Eric?
So Sean, Kevin, how many years has this been going on, just for everyone to understand? We're talking about storms back in what, 2014, 15, whatever?
Yeah, 13, 2015, and 18.
And 12.
So for everyone to understand that this is, this is what happens. And this is even with having federal money to be able to do it, and this isn't a hard wall, this is different. So it's discouraging, so is this mitigation, I guess you'd call it, on top of or coming out of the amount of money that we originally thought we were going to spend on this project on Third Cliff? Or is this just getting added on top?
It's additional.
All right, it's additional, so in other words, to be able to do what we propose to do, which is, I recall, the federal agency sent us back a few times to say, well, you can't do this, you can't do that. This is where we are now, now we're talking about habitat versus.
In order to make the repairs for the damage that's there, they're requiring us to rebuild habitat that had been taken out sometime in the past.
Habitat taken out by national storms or.
State agencies aren't agreeing, we're running the same problems down Oceanside Drive, just up the street from, we were talking about City Point, well, because they're talking about the same thing, about nourishment, about the town being responsible for the nourishment over years, which we feel is very unreasonable, so that's, that's where we are.
And we're trying to appropriate our 45% of whatever that mitigation cost will be.
Thank you. Andrew, any questions?
No, just figuring it out.
I know, I thank you for the pictures, I think it was really helpful, those were my questions when I read the information. The only question I have is like, I guess, was reimbursement, how closely we could get reimbursement? It seems like it's a long process.
About a year, about a year ago, we had a 2007 storm reimbursement, I had no idea if it was a hurricane.
2007, last year.
I don't even know why we bothered to lie in the hot seat.
It's discouraging.
Yes.
And I agree with you on the, at the conference this weekend, there was a lot of talk, so we'll see if that becomes action.
Karen, Canfield, anything? No? All right, any questions in the? Down here, go. Yes, sir?
Well, if they do the nourishment.
Uh, Nathan, I'm sorry, sir, I was reminded.
We can call your vote.
Okay.
I'm actually working on it.
Yeah, okay.
If they do the nourishment, what would be the timeline for a wall repair, is that a permanent issue again? Would you say 2012 or 2014?
It's slow, yeah.
It should be a permitting issue when all the agencies agreed and came up with the decision. And, you know, we've, just so we know, I mean, Jim, myself, anytime we have any meetings with EDP or anybody else or bosses on, we're running this up and pushing it as far as we can. But it's just, it's just dying.
Yeah, and just for clarity, sir, this is just for the design of it, so then once we get that back and they review it, it gets approved, then it would go out to be awarded as a contract and then that's what we would call the larger time. So it isn't imminent, unfortunately, but it's in the process, it's just good.
Thank you. I guess that, I don't want to litigate this here, but Kevin, in your opinion, I mean, gentlemen, a lot of us who want this project to be moved forward, in your personal opinion, who do you think some of those dangers require, who can they contact if they happen already? Kind of pressure, or is that inappropriate?
No, I mean, it's not even that, we have been contacting, you know, our state reps as well as federal reps and talking about this already. But, you know, I would, I would suggest reaching out to the federal reps, you know, to see what could be done.
Congressman Hines, Senator Markey? Hopebar? Great ones. Anybody else? No, I was keen, sorry.
I was wondering about that, I didn't mention names.
I know, thank you, all right. All right, any other questions or concerns? No, all right, motion?
Move that the select board award the country a commitment for Third Cliff Habitat Restoration and Nourishment Design and Permitting to GZA, GEO, and POM. Name is 300,000, 229,168 dollars.
Motion by Andy Goodrich, second by Susan Harrison, roll call vote. Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, that's it, right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully it'll move along.
Yes.
Quicker. Okay, so next up, our agenda is a discussion in vote to review a water abatement request from Rich and Sheri Westelman on 114 Manuel Road, are you familiar with this? Come on up, if you wouldn't mind. Not a natural, we got a water fountain here as well as in our, in our DPWs, so how are you this evening?
We're great, thank you, this is Sheri and I'm Rich Westelman, from 114 Manuel Road, been living for the last eight years. And we really appreciate your, especially while matter given with some other big numbers, a big important thing.
Yeah, no, we appreciate and we understand. So just so folks understand what happened, we are in the C W letter, and we do have a process when there are water leaks, whether it be toilet or pipes or whatnot, so we do have a process when that happens. And it sounds like you were contacted by the water department for some excessive usage back in the fall. And so you promptly identified it, brought in a plumber, and had it fixed, but it was a very, very large amount of water that unfortunately puts you into a very extremely high bracket for usage charges. So, yeah, just correct, I have everything wrong. So you did, the abatement was granted and going to our policy, which was 26% of the fee was abated to you because of that. And so your bill was reduced by 26%. However, certainly do understand that it still is a large amount, and I think that's why the board is open to discussing it. It seems to be, you know, eight times what you normally pay, but we need to be careful too, to make sure that, you know, we're consistent with things like this and whatnot. What struck me was, you know, that it was, that the amount that you paid, so in excess of $5,000, was even more than what you pay, that you said in taxes, correct?
Yes.
Quarterly taxes.
Right, quarterly taxes.
Yeah, so that, that's a lot, I think, that's quite a bit. So I'll just let you, what are you requesting, what are you hoping to see, and then I'll open up to the board and kind of talk about this a little bit.
Sure, and I appreciate your observing, one of the interesting things to us was, well, because of the way the penalty structure works, the water usage was five to six times normal, but the fee was 20 times normal. So it kind of, I understand that it ratchets up when you get up there, which makes sense if you're, you know, if you're kind of using water, eroding water along the line, kind of intentionally going around the guidelines, but, you know, we just, one of the real frustrating expressions is that there's no way to know this until we got the call from the water department saying, hey, you haven't seen your water bill yet, it's coming out next week, but when you do, you're gonna, you're not going to be real happy with it. You know, there's no way, it's not like you have a monitor to know what's going on, so as you said, we fixed it soon as we could. So, you know, I propose that some thoughts in the letter about looking at what our typical bill is or taking the average of our bill and even saying a premium on that, you know, percent more or whatever than that. But, you know, we just appreciate your consideration, if there's any more that we can do to knock that down. As you said, we're already way from 5,000 down to about 4,000, which we appreciate, but certainly would like to see if we could, you know, do some work.
Okay, so I think everybody understands, I don't know, Sean, if you wanted to speak to the issue at all, I mean, I appreciate the water department, did you help them and letting them know that that was happening, it's great. I didn't know if you wanted to have any commentary before I turn it over to the board?
No, it might be something that, you know, we could consider under the hardship with the board's approval, that the bill is increased by that percentage in something that we take a look at in our policy and see if that's something that we can read with and discuss and handle it that way. I think it gets, it gets a little tricky how, how we alter the policy and solve this, you know, we try to stick to it as much as possible for everybody.
And I think the policy is pretty old, for a man.
This is probably the original policy and it was put in writing in 2014.
Yeah.
So it's been a hand-me-down policy.
Did you have anything you wanted to ask Sean for more?
Other than my name's Eric.
Eric.
I am not having a good time tonight.
Sean was crazy for that. They look pretty quick.
Okay, go. Eric, you can do this.
I'll work it out. No, I mean, it's, when you look at the policy, other than hardship, it's really just a formula that's followed. And then certainly, you know, I think in this case, I was given the repair bill, people just confirmed that this was the identified problem, we got it fixed, it's proof we got it fixed, and then we apply the standard formula.
Okay.
So, you know, hardship is really in the policy, but it says most of the time. And we're, we're pretty generous with that, but it's. And we're, we're pretty generous with that, but it's, you know, as far as the policy goes, that's.
Yeah, that's us.
Kind of your purview, yeah.
Yeah, so I, and I apologize. Did you guys come to us with the hardship or was it just, uh?
No, we went through the abatement process and they wrote the letter to us and we called to say, wow, that, thank you, but it still leaves a lot. They said the next step is to ask the board to select and to consider it.
We'll, we'll straighten that out because I, my personal feeling is it, it shouldn't go there. We should hopefully be able to talk about hardships and say that, you know, our bill increased X number of times, you know, what, what, you know.
Is this, I think what, what, what I'm saying is, you know, after the tier breaks within, it makes these circumstances, you know, really shoots the bill way up.
It's more common, yeah.
So it probably does make sense to take a look at it.
And remember, it's worked for an awful long time.
What do you?
The policy, no, I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, but I, I'm sure that maybe. It's worth looking at. Yeah.
So you're suggesting that we'd probably be better to just work amongst ourselves.
It's the board, it's the board's purview, but you know what? I would just suggest.
I'm gonna open up for discussion for a moment and see, you know, if it has sense what the board wants to do.
I mean, it's always hard because you have a policy. You want to make sure that everybody is treated the same way, but obviously something went drastically wrong. And I think, for me, it does, it does bring up a point that we should do this. Policy for couples. One, tiered system. Two, cost out of pocket for someone to get a repair person that's gone up exponentially in the last. So those costs are, it's, to me, any of those policies are effective when someone knows the right effect, right? Problem, fix it, get it. So that's. And whether or not we make a determination of if you wanted to make a change on some of that policy tonight, and so these folks might be affected by it and everyone else will look forward. I don't know.
I don't know that we adjust the policy tonight. That takes a lot of editing and review, but certainly we can direct, you know, the next step after we hear, you know, the sense of the board. Changing the policy tonight.
I, I agree that, I think, I in the spirit of where we will go.
Yes.
That's right.
Okay, Susan?
Yeah, I'm, I'm toward changing the policy and not giving one behind me, um, changes. I think we have to define hardship. I'm not sure what's qualified as hardship. And, um, I think we could look at the policy to have the percentage go up that we are able to rebate. But, um, I'm very much interested in equity, right? And that I think people should have a transparent policy as to how they can do an abatement, not just to say, you may time to come in. So I want to be, I want to be really positive and, um, that it's a change of the policy and that everybody has access to the same policy. So those are my hopes. I'm not embarrassed to give anyone a one behind change.
Okay, so if we say to go back to do the policy, wait for the Westmans to go revisit them after that policy is accepted? Is that what you recommend? Just to understand the next steps?
Or, yeah.
Karen?
I guess you can make it retroactive whenever these goes without. I understand those other people involved too. So that's, that's the other thing. I, I actually called and asked, like, how many have we gotten? That's like in the thousands of dollars. And would you say that around twenty? So like, I don't want to make just the policy for these individuals when there's twenty other citizens that would have.
I, I'm not, I couldn't find the exact number. There, there's been a good number of people that have come in. And I do think it really is the result of the, the tier rates kicking in and that's why. So there, there hasn't been a good number of people that have come in. And you've, we've processed, when it's a repair, we've processed through the normal abatement process. Like if you want other one that we're reviewing right now. But I, I think there'll be more, based on what I've seen.
So I guess my, I would want everybody to have a second.
Karen, can you?
Thanks, guys. Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I think the, this is, this is a great highlight of something that, in the policy that should be tweaked, and I think the tweak is pretty straightforward where we revise it that, as, as Mr. Goodrich said, through no fault of theirs, a problem happened, they did the right thing, they corrected the situation, water department did the right thing. It's a demonstrated, um, you know, accident, basically. It's not willful misuse of water that, which was the intent of the tiers. I will say, Kevin probably doesn't even remember this, years ago, I had exactly the same thing happen. I don't remember what the leak was, but there was a leak and I got this enormous bill and it was before the tiered. So I, I, you know, it happens and I got the, whatever it was, twenty six percent abatement and that was that and went on my merry way. I think that can be addressed. I think some of the other, um, folks that are having sticker shock on this, we really do need to make sure that we're analyzing the root of those issues because, you know, there are, there are other side of, you know, whenever you change a, a big, you know, make a big change like that, there's going to be unintended consequences and this is exactly one of them. So I think we need to be very mindful when we do the review of the folks coming in with complaints that we assess them to see if they meet the goals that we were intending or whether we need additional tweaks to the policy. Um, as to this application, I think, you know, if, if there can be some patience, if we can go through that process, then I think it would be appropriate to address them as, as Harrison said, that we're, you know, we try to be as, we don't want to do one-offs because that's, that's not fair. Um, but I think that in this case, it's highlighting a problem with the policy.
Okay. So. You can go for it.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead. Um, a couple of things. I would like to say that as a homeowner, I said, oh my God, how do I know I have a leak in my toilet? So of course, what did I do? The normal thing, my son, I would say he Googled something. I Googled it and apparently if you put blue coloring in the tank of your toilet, don't do anything, flush it for like half an hour. If you begin to see the color from tank coming into the toilet bowl, you have a leak. Uh, I, I never knew that. But it's, it's one of those things that holy cow, if this can happen and it wasn't willful and it doesn't make a noise, there's nothing that tells you it's happening. So I would just advise everyone at home, just, you know, be sure you do that. On the other hand, I do think that the reason why we extended that last year was to encourage conservation and to, to make people aware that water is a precious resource. And I don't know about anyone else, but when I was growing up, water was quote unquote free. It was free. And so people took twenty minute showers, they, they use the washing machine, you know, constantly all this. So it, it's unfortunate you got caught in this, this situation. And I agree, I tweaked to the policy. I don't think we intended to make, uh, the, um, it's a work of the penalty for this to be a tier five penalty, right? But I don't know how you start to parse who was being willful and who was not. So I think that's our job to do the best we can to figure it out. So, but I agree, we can't just apply it to one case. All right, so what I'm hearing is that we'd like an opportunity to amend the policy. If you can give us a couple of weeks to do that. Um, so that we're fair since this additional tier of usage has been implemented. It's going to impact more than just on flush up and move. And I'm so sorry in toilet leaks and didn't know. I have no idea. So I may be next along. Just, who knows? If you guys.
Get the key card.
Yeah.
He said it's true. Everything comes with.
So, uh, I'll go back to Eric and Kevin for a moment. Can you get us a draft of something that you pose will be fair, taking a look at these new usage rates? Because I don't want to let the Westmans wait, you know, for six months, you know, so if I can bring them back at a couple more meetings, so obviously we would want to take a look at a policy improvement. So it would be at least a couple of.
Can I make a suggestion to just throw something out there?
Yep.
Maybe if the board classified hardship as unintended large water bills or something like that allowed us in those cases to maybe give an additional twenty percent relief uh, under those circumstances and, and then we could revisit the policy because this, this may take a little while. It's not, not necessarily going to be an easy.
Right, it's going to require a lot of analysis.
It's going to require some analysis. Uh, we'll probably have to reach out to some other towns. Um, but in the meantime, because their bill's going to be due, other people are going to be coming in and their bills are going to be due. Is, you know, I'll leave it up to the board, whatever that percentage is, but maybe we can negotiate that with hardships, take care of those problems.
Karen Campbell?
A real hand raised. Um, it would be interesting, I think, to the board if, if, if we could get the calculation of if the, um, fourth, was it fourth tier? What the, what the past, uh, usage ratings were, what their bill would have been before we, we did tweak them or even just at the normal rate? What's the delta between if they've been using their normal rate, they're in only tier one? That rate applied to the gallons that were used? I'd love to know the difference between that and the bill they received.
I was kind of thinking along those lines too. If you could, if you could calculate it using the first tier, that they would normally follow what the bill would have been and the way it'd be applied and being into that rather than a larger, uh, that was a thought I had today when I was looking at this.
That makes sense to me. That's good recommendation. Susan?
Um, I was, I was gonna say, I mean, that's a good idea too. I was more looking at, um, the high water billing, the twenty five percent increase in that, like you said, by twenty percent or twenty five percent to fifty and then keep the hardship. Cause I do think hardship is different. Like it's, um, it's somebody who like financially cannot pay. Like it's generally like the example, an elderly person, like so tap on there like, you know, I, I think they, we do need a special circumstance for people that truly cannot pay, um, as a hardship. So I would want to think about, um, modifying the percent so we could give a higher percent. Or the difference, like you said, one of those.
So for this situation, um, do we have any kind of consensus to take a look, as Eric had mentioned and Karen had mentioned, at what those rates would have been at the first tier applied at and adjusted to that piece while we look at revising the entire policy?
Yeah, um, can I add one other thing? Can you do that for all the people that applied for hardships in the past quarter who had bills over a thousand dollars?
I don't think we've had any hardships. Well, this has, this order, this would be people that apply because there was a leak that they found.
Right, exactly. It's not a hardship. Oh, I'm sorry, people that applied for an abatement in the past.
Who have.
That had a leak.
Right, who have successfully provided the documentation.
Who have successfully provided documentation. Cause like there, I'm just, my point is somebody came in, they applied for hardship, they say they had a three thousand dollar bill, they got a thousand, I don't know, they, they got five hundred dollars or something. They paid the rest. Why should they have to, why shouldn't they get that opportunity? I'm just trying to be fair to everybody in situ that had high water bills.
Yeah, I mean, we have all the abatements on file after they get approved. So it's really, I mean, I'll, um, we can look at those and whatever the board's willing to do, I can, I can follow that. It would certainly happen to you.
How many are you talking about? Ten, five, twenty?
I, I wouldn't, yes, I'd have to really.
I don't know. That just sounds like a bit of a rest to me. Um, I personally think it's too complicated for us to on file right now. Just I, I, I just can't go see that way. Um, so. Andrew?
In the interim, maybe also just for peace of mind, I don't know, the board's not sure, I'm at least suspending any interest paid and.
Not putting readings on people's property?
And so we definitely have to make sure that if we are freezing and taking some time, that no issue, we pay, it has to be paid. They can sit on it essentially and then say, all right, we'll come back to it. I don't know.
We appreciate that, but we were on an auto pay, so we've already paid the whole amount. We have even the abatement we've already paid, so we're going to get that, at least that back. But so there's no timing issue, just from a, a resident point of view, I agree wholeheartedly. I would not want to come to you and say this is financial hardship, you know, to ruin the family. I wouldn't do it. Um, I also really like the idea of trying to use that other tier by saying, okay, this wasn't, uh, you willfully trying to use more water, you shouldn't because you're trying to water your lawn every day. So yes, there was an overdoing, it's a mistake and it's too bad, but let's at least remove the penalty aspect and just go to what would be a, a reasonable charge for that unfortunate, you know, amount. So. We just really appreciate you looking at this in terms of this data.
So, um, we're just gonna need a motion to provide some sort of direction here in what we want to do. So, um, let me just start here. I personally am in a favor of going back to that first tier rate and adjusting it based on that and the usage in this situation as well, just because they brought it forward to us and while we work on amending the policy for everyone. So I would be in favor of granting, I don't really want to call it an abatement, but an adjustment, I guess, based on first tier. For the Westmans, um, and then work on a policy. And if it needs to be retroactive at that point, well, better understand that implications, so like, you're gonna have some analysis. And that's right. If you don't want to make that motion, that's just where, where my ethos at, so. Anybody?
What's the first tier rate?
You mean, I'm sorry. Does your motion to be the first tier or the tier that they're normally on?
The tier that they're normally on. So the tier that they're normally on, but I don't know what that is, like what that, what that calculation would be based on, like that calculation that typically got them to the seven hundred dollars, right, that tier?
You could look at, right, you, you could still look at the historical usage.
Yeah.
And then that would tell you, you know, this is where this resident's normal falls.
Right.
So it, it may be the first tier, probably will, you, you can look at that.
And apply that to their total usage.
Yeah, it just kind of as an aside, we, I know you have auto paper. We're saying, we, we kind of do that if this ever is viewed like that. I, we say holding interest holds everything until it gets up to you, but that's kind of, I kind of do that standard.
Key is with the policies to be settled.
So it's easy to understand that.
I wrote a motion based on what the Senate.
That will impact entry.
So, see, um, I have to grant a request for a water bill adjustment based on the tier they're normally billed to be calculated by the water department. The property located at one fourteen Manhills. That's for the situation.
For this particular situation.
In addition, uh, the water department will review the existing policy and make a reference to this law. That's the spirit of what I was saying. That would be the motion that I made. And I'll put it out there if anybody wants to second it.
I appreciate it. So essentially go back to the real tier and then.
On the tier they're normally billed to be calculated by the water department. So say their, their tier, their usage was five dollars, whatever, I'm just gonna throw it out there. But they still, they still use a hundred thousand gallons. That five dollars is going to be applied to the hundred thousand gallons, not the twenty five dollars that's at tier four to the hundred thousand gallons. I don't have the rates in front of me, although we are, so just throwing it out there. That's the spirit of what I, I recommend. And if nobody wants to second it, somebody else can.
Second?
And I would just need to know.
So, I, do you need more clarification?
No.
I just think it'll impact every single abatement. So even the smallest abatement, like I had a leaking toilet and I got a bill and I thought it was huge and it was three hundred dollars. Cause I've never, it's like, I've never been out of the first tier and I did my twenty five percent. So that policy would impact every single abatement. And it's a lot of math. And it's a lot of math to do with it.
So we're not, we're not putting a policy in place right now, we're just getting an axure, which is.
Okay, nobody else.
And you have, you reserve a right to vote now.
I vote.
So there's, there's a motion on the table, it's been seconded and we'll do a roll call. So, Lorraine? Uh, we do roll calls. Karen Canfield, second in my motion.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just going to read it one more time.
Do we have further, further discussion before we vote?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Ms. Harrison's right about, like, it is a one-off, which is exactly what we don't want to be doing. Uh, because we haven't decided the policy. Um, I think we're going to end up somewhere like that. But I think that's, I, is, am I interpreting you right? That's where the, that's where the rub is? Is if we vote.
That is exactly, it's a one-off and I, I'm not sure that's what our policy will be.
So if we pause to write the appropriate policy that's heading in that direction, that's applicable to anyone that's in this situation? Um, thank you for already paying the whole bill, so we don't, we're not, we, where we'd be doing a rebate at any point, at any case. Would that be, it, it, would that be more prudent on reflection? To just give ourselves a couple of weeks to, to work with the water department and, and come up with one that is applicable to everyone? And do, and as Ms. Conley said, you know, not do it on the fly, because that's never a good idea. I think we'll get there, I just wonder.
I think so.
All right, so let's vote on this motion and, uh, if it fails, it fails and somebody else can make a second one.
Okay, I'm going to read the motion again.
Okay.
Move to grant your request for a water bill adjustment based on the tier they are normally billed to be calculated by the water department for the property located at 114 Man Hill Road. In addition, the board has requested the DPW review and make recommendations to the select board to revise the existing policy ongoing for all residents. Motion by Ms. Karen, second by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
You gotta do roll call.
Okay, I'll do that personally. Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
No.
Ms. Harrison?
No.
Ms. Canfield?
Voting no against my own motion.
Okay, and Ms. Conley?
No.
Yep.
So unfortunately, that, that process failed. Um, okay, so the other motion, if what I'm just trying to summarize for you, um, is, um, move to request the DPW review and make recommendations to the select board to revise the existing policy ongoing for all residents.
Second?
I, I would revise that to say to, to address accommodations for, um, documented, I don't want to say no fault, but documented unintended water leaks or something. Somebody say it better than that.
Well, it'll come, that will come to the policy that you review, Karen.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah. Who's moving that motion? I'll move it, so moved.
Okay.
Would that allow?
Discussion, yeah.
Would that allow for a record active, you do change the policy in these places?
It'll be, that'll be, you have to take it hard. The policy would advance forward, so we're going to have, you know, that's the intention of the board. Right, well, if that's the intention of the board, that'll go up during the policy discussion.
In the policy discussion of the policy, you say? These notes?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what is the name of this policy, the formal name?
It's called the Water and Sewer Bill Abatement Process.
I want to make sure I use it.
I'm rating off.
Okay, it's the Water and Sewer Bill.
Abatement process. Last updated January 2014.
Okay. Was there a second, Lorraine?
Uh, I just have the motion by Mr. Goodrich, second by Ms. Harrison.
Okay. Any further discussion? Anyone?
Um, I just clarified, so are we looking for the policy that we've had with the water and sewer? Are we looking for adding like a fifth item that would address this specifically? Or do you want an entire new policy on?
I think we need to take, I think we'll be hearing from the boards, want to take a look at the abatement policy period, the percentage, any hardship, um, and taking into account the new tiers that are in place. Because we're seeing some excessive bills on, or, which is, which is, Ms. Canfield said, is unintended. It's very big, enormously high when something breaks.
So would we put that in as like a number five, reasons for water abatement with additional abatement?
I, I think you guys can take it and let's work on it together. And I don't think we're going to solve it and I'm not going to be able to lead great direction right now. So let's, I'll sit down with you, you can take a look at it and get something back in front of the board.
Okay.
If you please.
I just want the expectations. I don't want to come back with something, a lot of work into it.
Yeah.
You know, if it's not.
I'm happy to have it. Okay, second?
No, that sounds, I'll ask John.
Roll call vote?
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yeah.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
It's all done?
Yeah.
So, thank you. Um, I'm sure we'll be in touch in a couple of weeks, but at least, you know, in the very near future, we'll put this quickly.
Great, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, this is really, they've been really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My first?
All right. Next, we got zoning articles to review, so. Karen? Now, Lander and Patty, coming up, thank you. Probably work on these.
Thank you.
You're almost there, Rover.
Good evening.
One of the final line.
Um.
So do you want the first one, or do you want Article 16?
Yeah, sure. Um, so Article 16 is, um, the section 3A MBTA compliance. Um, this is basically a housekeeping article. Um, we are fortunate that we had the vision in 2019 and 2021 to make some revised zoning to zone for mixed-use and multifamily buildings. So some of the changes are basically housekeeping and I'll go through them. I just want to let you know that we had, the planning board had their public hearing on January 11th. Nobody, two people showed up and maybe one online, nobody asked any questions. So, um, that was, that was good. We have already applied for our mandatory mixed-use district. You had to apply 90 days prior to town meeting. So we applied on December 20th. We have some questions, we, we sent multiple emails, we haven't been answered. We also applied for pre-approval for our zoning as well. We applied yesterday and we have some major questions on the pre-approval process because it wants to let us submit all our sub-districts. So we have questions into that. We were trying to do the pre-approval so we'd have an idea of what the state thought prior to town meeting and then we could let, you know, the town, the town meeting know. So the changes to the zoning bylaw for section 3A are, we are going to change the zoning to replace DHCD and putting EOLHLC because the agency need change. Um, we're amending the zoning map, um, to reflect the new pedestrian frontage zone. And one property, the whole property wasn't in one zone. So we're putting the property only by one whole owner in one zone. Uh, we're adding definitions, um, standard definitions, affordable unit, applicant, area mean income, commuter rail station, EOLHLC, MBTA, mandatory mixed-use, sub-district. Um, a lot of other towns are doing the same thing. We're amending, um, types of districts to, you know, to say, um, which include the two mandatory mixed-use districts. We have the NDTV dis, sub-district in North Situate and the Village Center in North Situate. We're updating the table of use regulations to, uh, to allow all the, uh, multifamily buildings have to be by, allowed by right in all of our, uh, sub-districts in the VCN. So we, we've done that, we've added, um, that and flex-based commercial building, which it's already in our bylaw, we just put it into the table of use for clarification. We've made some, a couple of other minor changes in the table of use. Takes up a lot of pages, but that's because the table of use is long. We've taken out section 430.3, multifamily dwelling complex in its entirety because it doesn't apply to anything. Nothing was ever zoned for that, for that section, so we're taking it out. We're amending the pedestrian frontage zone, so it complies with, um, the, the Village Center requirements. Um, we're taking out words of appeals in one phrase, uh, because it's not, it's not appropriate. Um, we're changing the density per acre from 12 units per acre by right to 15 units per acre by right for multifamily buildings in the GWB district, the NRM district and the GPC district. These are, these are the only three districts that we need to change the density by right in order to zone for our required compliance number. Our required compliance number is 1239 with our mandatory mixed-use district. We can get 209, so we only need 100, uh, 1,039 or something here. So we were able to make the change as little as possible from our existing zoning bylaw. Um, couple other minor changes in wording. Under the fair housing and affordability standards, we have to change it so that under a by-right project, we have to lower the percent of affordable housing to 10% because that's all the state allows without a financial feasibility analysis. We did not choose to do a financial feasibility analysis because we didn't want the zoning to be impacted. Uh, we're going, so we're going down from 15% to 10% for a by-right project. A special permit still requires 20% affordable. Um, parking, we're not allowed to, uh, we're not allowed to have parking for our commercial vehicles in the VCN in a mandatory mixed-use district, so we're taking that parking out. And it's a, it's a small number of parking spaces. In one of the projects we approved, it had like 6,500 square feet of commercial space. At one space per 500, it's not many spaces. You have the MBTA parking lot in, the two MBTA parking lots in Green Bush because it's on both sides of the street. And in North Situate, you have the MBTA parking lot and you have the WPA building parking lot. So I believe there will be plenty of parking.
So those will all have to stay intact in the future development?
Yes. And then we're just doing another small housekeeping changes to the VCN in a couple of places. And that's, that's the changes to comply with section, um, 3A.
So if you could, in a nutshell, I know we've, we've talked about this a little bit, like, just in like two sentences, you know, what is that overriding benefit? Can you just share, you know, for the public, like, what is that overriding benefit that, that you've all worked on to implement this to the town, to the residents? To make these changes?
It's, it's minimal changes to a zoning bylaw that the town is already approved to comply with something that we have to comply.
With the new, with the new rule that's coming down to us from the state?
It's a shout.
To be eligible for state funds.
To be eligible for state funds.
We need to add that. Okay, because I think it's going to be really important to express that.
The list of grants is, it's, it's fairly extensive. The town has benefited in the past from many of these grants. We don't know what other repercussions the state will do. I mean, we know that the Attorney General is threatening to sue towns that do not comply.
And you, you feel, you all feel fairly confident that these changes will be in compliance?
We do, we, we had a consultant help us with this, we got a grant for a consultant. Consultant believes that they all comply. We believe we've complied with what the state has said.
Thank you. No, it's a lot of work. And you've done a great job planning it and putting everything in motion early on, so you hit that deadline in 90 days, so thank you.
Thank you.
Karen, I mean, you've worked closely.
Yeah, well, it's been, it's been hard work, our board has worked hard, Karen especially has worked very hard on this. Um, I think we, as a town, have done the best we can to comply. And if, um, you know, if something happens, if it's a glitch, well, it's not just going to happen to us. Um, if they haven't got all of their rules and regulations buttoned up. Um, and I do know that last summer, they changed it because they were so much upset over the fact that they weren't going to allow mixed use in these MBTA, um, projects. So, um, I, I appreciate all the hard work and I think it's all been excellent. And, uh, you know, I hope people will, if they have questions, they can certainly go online. A lot of this is already on the, the planning board website. And I was at the meeting, but there was no one else there. But, um, but people have an opportunity on the planning board, they do hybrid meetings. So if people have questions, they don't have to come in person and, you know, so people could have gone online and had a question.
We did have a zoning workshop in December. We do it, try to do it before our public meeting to introduce the concept and nobody.
Nobody, nobody. Thank you for giving people the answer. Tried.
We tried.
Andrew?
I will disagree with my colleague a little bit, but it's how we did their best. I think this might be one of the most, you're selling everyone here short. This is, I think, honestly, one of the most elegant pieces of policy. I mean that sincerely, because we've worked and done. And where we are now, it is magnificent. Look around, so many other towns, communities, fire, fighting, preparing, and hearing the news, they're yelling. Not only did the proof plan save us time and money, I didn't know whether it's going to help Situate in the years to come. So it is, and I mean that sincerely, I think it's elegant. I think it's just so well done. And I, you know, to say that often, I think we've re-policy the town, we're positioning, getting everything. So I love it, I think it's fabulous and well done.
I 100% agree, policy is my job and this is excellent work. Um, and I think we are way ahead of the curve, uh, as far as state compliance. And I appreciate all the effort to this. Thank you. And I appreciate that we'll get a grant later. It's a win-win here, so, um, thank you so much for all of your work. Karen, Canfield?
Uh, no, I, I will only note that, uh, yes, I, uh, I agree, this is fabulous. We are ahead of the curve. The work kept us ahead of the curve, that's going to pay, pay forward down the road. Uh, one thing I was going to tell, um, our board during liaison reports, and I think this is a good time to bring it, is, uh, Patty presented, uh, this and other bylaws to the bylaw review committee last, last night? Was it just last, yes, last night? Um, and that body will also be providing their recommendations to our board before we vote on the measure before town meeting.
Right. Could I make one comment?
Absolutely. Uh, zoning does not come before bylaw reviews. I thought that this charter, and I actually addressed chair about this today. I, I might not as, or as early as I've played, but, um, we had everybody previously that we would do charter. I thought it was to just look at general bylaws. And zoning does not come under general bylaws. So it's, it's to encourage me, make sure they're safe within the township. Zoning is not, I'm just, that's better, just a question, I just.
No, I don't disagree with you. I mean, I think the charge of the bylaw review committee is always going to just look at the bylaws, not the general bylaws, right Karen? Not the separate zoning bylaws? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I meant to, to the meat loss.
Yeah, 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 no, the purview is to look at the general bylaws. Set, okay. Um, anything else? All right, we'll go to Article 17, um, which is the wireless policy. All right, we'll go to article 17, which is the wireless policy for wireless towers.
All right, so what we're doing is we're just clarifying some language in the existing bylaw. The existing bylaw had some language that seemed to suggest that a site plan approval, but then two lines later, it said special permit. So we're just clarifying the language that you need a special permit for a wireless communication on an existing telephone pole. We're not changing anything else in the bylaw.
So we'll just put it out there for better review. Do you think that'd be your board?
Right.
Any questions?
So can you give me an example of what would result in a negative action of denial of a special permit on an existing pole? Would it be that it's too crowded? And would it be that there's, there's another similar installation down the street?
I don't think, I don't think that we could give you an example right now. It's just that the criteria, they have to, the planning board will have to find certain criteria met when they come in for, for the special permit.
So they have to demonstrate the need?
They have to demonstrate the need and that is, some of that seems to be a little bit subjective.
Right.
And, and I'm sure when the next one comes in, we will be knocking at town council's door because, you know, we have been told that we cannot deny these. But yet they have to prove that, they have to prove the need for them. And proving the need is not just based on, it's based on capacity. It goes into a lot of stuff with dropped telephone calls, but it also has to do with streaming, et cetera. And that's something that we don't want to, we, we know that the town supports wireless communication because we do not have, we do not have files. And so we're just trying to make the bylaw right now so everybody understands that it's a special permit.
All right. Thank you. Andrew?
I think this change will be, it's good, it's needed. Or it's going to make it easier for those to come in and get service.
Wait, are we in? Karen?
No, thank you for spending, thank you for sending so much time on this and addressing these concerns from the residents.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We're just reviewing, not voting. So we'll vote to support the different articles at a future meeting. So thank you for all your work. We know it was a lot.
Thank you. We already provided the language to Nancy. Nancy for the board.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, have a great night. Are you staying to view the state's budget? And just kind of, just give us a moment. Just give us a moment to grab our budget.
Okay.
Behind us, next to us. So next on the agenda, we're going to start going through some departmental budgets. So the first one is planning. That's why Karen and Patty are staying here. 175 in your books. Give us a moment, we'll take a look at that. And I think, you know, Karen, if you just wanted, just a couple of highlights. And more importantly, I know the board's always interested in what the challenges may be. So as we're looking through the budgetary process, we're looking at collectively what those challenges may be. And then at the end, what the process will go back with Nancy. We should prioritize and change the settings feel need to be made. Does that make sense?
All right, so I mean, the numbers are the numbers. That's, we don't ask for any more than we need. We, you know, we have been, we've been very busy. We remain very busy. We don't, we're not seeing any shortage in applications at all. We just approved a bunch of projects and we, we are going to get a new round in the spring. We've tried to encourage people to wait till after town meeting so that they can be, be under the new set of rules. Because some people, it's going to impact very favorably. Some people, it, it won't. So we, you know, we are constantly working to try to develop new bylaws. We have quite an extensive load with projects. You know, we try to, we try to implement and treat everybody fairly. I suppose that's probably one of the biggest complaints. People think that they're being held to a different standard when we're just trying to do the bylaw fairly to everybody. You know, so we have all the projects that we can right now on subsidized housing inventory. We constantly meet with new people to talk about new projects. We, we rather, we encourage them to come in and have several meetings with us if necessary so that, you know, they hopefully spend less time and money in the end as well. You know, the projects get peer reviewed by a consulting engineer and that helps us determine if they really meet the standards for drainage and, and zoning bylaw.
And are you seeing the frequency of applications? I mean, you just said that you're asking people a little about these changes, but are you seeing the frequency of applications maintain, increase? Like what is your feeling like the church starts to go to coming?
What I think we're seeing in the past few years, and I expect it to continue, an increase in the number of accessory dwelling special permits.
Oh, really?
Those are, those are, those are very hot because it's often perceived that an accessory dwelling unit is another form of affordable housing. We, we don't put them on the subsidized housing inventory, but they are often viewed as another form of affordable housing. The other, the applications in the VCN, people want to keep developing. We're not seeing any shortage of those applications. We're still seeing a fair, seeing a lot of stormwater permits and common driveways and A&amp;Rs. You know, so there's still land to divide.
Wasn't A&amp;R?
Approval not required. It means that it's not a subdivision. And the planning board just endorses it. And they've looked at it. It's not, it's not a subdivision of land.
Okay. Thank you for that. So your request is $290,111 and that is one the town administrator is also approving. It's an 8.4% increase over fiscal year budget of 24, which is mostly just salaries. Any questions for Karen?
I do not. Cancel all of that.
Karen Canfield? Nope. You're all set? All right, thank you. Have a great evening. All right. So conservation is next, 171. And I know Frank isn't able to make up the CV. And we have a big C and R conservation department. So Nancy Paul is going to cover this budget, 171.
So the overall increase from the budget consists of 24 to 25 hundred plus. It's just over $10,000 in assets, all estimated contractual costs of living and debt increases. As you mentioned, there is a vacancy currently in the conservation agent and natural resource director. Their debt condition has been advertised and resonated coming in for it. Just to touch on some of the occupants and the staff in that office and the conservation commission themselves, there's been 65 notices of intent, seven amendments to order, 35 requests for determinations, 32 determinations of pluggability, 12 stormwater permits, 18 violation negotiations, 450 psych visits, 55 minor permit, minor activity permits, 61 certificates of warrant were issued, and 25 public conservation commission meetings, and then three extensions of orders of conditions. So I think you get the point that they have been physically. And then there was a, a listing of the global items that they have purview over and through the stormwater bylaw, protection act, and all of the open space under the conservation commission control. And if they could ask for additional funds at the special town meeting to start some type of maintenance program. There isn't anything in the budget that didn't ask for anything and they're still trying to figure out what they're going to do. And then once they figure that out, then we can either start building into budget or have some other type of arrangement for how we manage.
Thank you for that and for clarifying that the position has been posted. Just so for the record, the request is $249,380. That was just better approved, which is just like you said, the factual increases for the staff. Do we, are we utilizing contracted help for enforcement?
Not currently.
Then previous meetings, not right now?
Not currently. There are, it's, there were funds included in fiscal 24 budget and inspection budget. The position has not yet been authorized because there are other positions ahead of it. And that position has not funded in fiscal 25 yet.
Questions?
So there's no money in this budget for maintenance of our open space.
There were no additions to any budget for new initiatives.
We did, I believe, put money in the budget last year for maintenance.
We, at the special time meeting, we have put $25,000, $35,000 into the conservation fund for maintenance of open space. So that's not going anywhere. It won't expire. It won't close out. It's in a place there where the conservation commission can access it as they move forward with their plans. I know they are working with Paul Scott about how they want to approach it. And if you're not familiar with Paul Scott, he's a retired engineer that does a lot. He did many of the big, the five decks, all those parking areas. So he's got a lot of experience working with crumb comp.
So that balance is still there?
It's still there and it will close out. It's stagnant until they decide how they want to approach this. They want to bring in an outside contractor, if they want to partner with DPW, whatever it is.
So Nancy, this is not directed to you, but it is directed to people who run the town that I don't know how we can have 400-plus acres of open space and have no money in the conservation budget to manage that amount. I think it's, personally, I think it's negligent. So I just want to go on the record and say that.
Yeah, I understand completely. And the conservation commission passing conservation fund with money that they can use at any cost and they continually turn back their technical services.
And where does that money go?
The money that turns back every year in other technical services, it closes out. The conservation fund is a separate trust fund only under their control.
Well, then I would like to say, just to add on top of that, that whoever we hire as the conservation officer has to take the, the job seriously. It's not just going out and enforcing, which is another whole story. But to me, it's really come up, coming up with a plan to, to be the proper stewards and take responsibility for the open space that we have.
I think it's very reasonable not to pass it along to the law.
I don't think that.
To make sure that, that the question has been asked out.
Send a message out, not just to Bob.
Right. No, it's fair, but Nancy's not hiring the others.
I, I, I sometimes, you know.
I was tasked with for years, I think. I'm not. Nancy at all. Anybody? Lummets?
No, I, I agree with you. You're sensitive about the maintenance. But no, I have no, I have no questions.
I don't have any questions. By the way, there needs to be better connection of using the cost and coordination of the conservation commission. And where's that $35,000, Nancy?
It's in a separate article. It's just for them and our post. And then they have.
So they just got access.
Yeah, and they also have the Driftway Conservation Fund, which is a separate trust fund that has funds in it.
We'll give you a minute to tell us. I can tell you.
Actually, no, I was thinking of emailing to Bob and Jim.
Oh. There you go.
Because I promised you, promised you anything, but I had to short term, I have a small mat.
Turn on voice to text. Well, it's, it's a good opportunity when you're hiring to restate what the job expectation is.
I think it's perfectly reasonable. I'll, yeah, we had this conversation shortly.
Karen Canfield, anything?
No, but it makes me curi, thank you Nancy. It makes me very curious what our stats are.
Or what our what?
Our stats are. So Nancy led with, they did, you know, X number of stormwaters, X number of, you know. I don't think I want to know our stats, but it'd be interesting.
$15,881.16 for the conservation fund right now.
All right, so they've got about 50 total.
Yeah. And I know they're working on it because of all updated meetings.
Okay. Well, at least there's something there.
Point taken. Good point. All right, are you representing anybody else this evening? Because we can just.
None of us asked.
Well, I just wanted to give you enough for you to stay there.
I'll come back.
Okay. So next is zoning board appeals, 176. Bob, how are you?
Very good, can you? Good evening.
Maybe just a quick overview, all the suite and numbers. It looks like they're actually level funded.
Yes, we are. The only increase again is salary to contractual and cost of moving.
Okay. So maybe just a couple of highlights and a couple of challenges for the board to hear so you can make sure that you're strongly supported.
I think the challenges basically don't change too much. But I would say that as the town becomes more developed, easy land to develop, easy land to build on is becoming more and more rare. So a lot of the projects that want to go forward need to have zoning board approval, zoning board special permits, oversight, that sort of thing. And we're seeing more and more of that on vacant land and also on small lots that are pre-existing non-conforming. As you have all observed, I'm sure, there's a state of tearing down small houses and building larger houses. Each one of those projects require this zoning board review and a special permit. So the number of zoning board applications is basically ticking up. And the other thing that's happening is that some of the large, more complicated projects, the ones that are going on in Green Bush and are in the planning and permitting stages for the Driftway corridor, also require, you know, zoning board to weigh in as one of a number of boards that figures that type of project. So that's the real challenge, to kind of keep up with things, to understand what the nuances are, to work with other departments on, on the larger, more complicated things that require that. We've had several new members come in recently. So everyone's, not everyone, but those newer members are coming up to speed and I would say doing that at a very acceptable rate. I'm impressed with the board that we, we have developed right now. So that's, that's a really good thing. Yep.
It's definitely one of our more important boards in town, in my opinion.
I would agree.
Okay. Anything else you want to highlight?
Well, no, I think that's, that really capsules it. Budget, as you've seen, doesn't go up very much. It's all personnel, 96%. We do have a new board secretary, Elizabeth Howie, is working out tremendously. I can't, I can't say how pleased I am with the way that's, that's happened, both internally in the office and externally, dealing with, with people and dealing with meetings. And board Elizabeth's really around pegging around the hole. So everybody's happy with the way things are going.
That's nice of you to say that. So congratulations to Elizabeth. She's in a good spot. Nice. Any questions, Bob? Andrew?
Yeah, totally agree. It's probably one of the most important areas in town. Just curious for some of the fees, when's the last time you've looked at somebody's, so maybe the fees for all these applications and the last time we kind of adjusted them?
For the zoning board, I couldn't tell you honestly, Andrew. It's been a long time. I, I know we looked at building permit fees.
Has it been a year of building permits?
What's the, I mean, any sort of, sure, there's issues, if there's an appeal.
No, we looked at building permit fees and adjusted them, I'm going to say maybe three to four years ago. Zoning, I don't know, I've been in the office 10 Zoning, I don't know, I've been in the office 10 years and I can't remember they've ever been during that time adjusted. So that might be, that's an interesting point.
Be a good call.
Perfect.
Thank you.
I don't have any. Great news still on the new board members.
Yeah, I really, it's a good board. We miss you. There's been some good people coming in.
Good, they have a whole board too.
Yes.
It's tough, but it's great. Karen Cantfield, anything? Nope? Karen Huntley? Nope. Wrong way, man. Okay. Bob, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Are you going to do inspections as well?
Yes, I am.
Okay. $241.
So that's a little more obligated. To start, I guess, with the numbers. You can see the, the position that Nancy was talking about. It shows up under this change PY column as a minus 41,404. That was the funding town media approved for that position, which hasn't been filled for the compliance officer. But that was going to be in our budget. The only other changes, again, are contractual, cost of living, that sort of thing. There's one other item that's been addressed, which is a $44,400 item not approved, but just kind of hanging out there. And I'll explain that a little bit if I might.
Sure.
The outside inspections are all done by subcontractors. They're not, sometimes the departmental personnel, myself and Neil principally, will do them when things get really hot and heavy. But most of our outside inspections and all of our trade inspections are done by outside contractors, and they're paid per inspection. And this is pretty typical of all the surrounding towns. Their rate right now is $32 per inspection. I sort of talked with my people and I'm pretty convinced that that's not reimbursing them for the time that they spend doing the inspections in any way, shape, or fashion.
Per inspection or per hour per inspection?
No, per inspection. They can do about three inspections an hour if everything lines up. And they are all trade contractors, they all have their own businesses. So the inspection process is above and beyond that. But it means they have to take time, that otherwise they might be working in their companies, so to speak, and billing their clients. It may be a little shocking, but these people bill themselves out at anywhere from $130, $160 an hour. So if they can do three inspections an hour, and otherwise, you know, that's $97, $96, otherwise they could be making, you know, 50% more than that, or more than 50% more. It's a problem, is what I'm trying to say. It's a problem also in that other towns, surrounding towns, are paying higher rates.
Have we done an analysis to understand what that delta is?
The surrounding towns, Norwalk is paying now 40, I want to say 45, but they're going to 50. Cohasset is paying 45 or 48. I'm sorry, I have the figures, I should have brought them. But we're in the, we're in the bottom tier, if not the bottom of all of the towns around us.
And is that proving difficult for you to secure inspectors to come work for?
Right now, right now, we've got a superb proof that has been with us over several years. What I don't want to do is start losing those guys.
So that's the $44,000 here?
So that's the $44,000. I would like to entertain raising that compensation to $40 per inspection, which would put us not at the highest rank of towns around us, but in the middle. And I've talked with Jim and Nancy about this, and I think everybody agrees it's justified. It's only a question of how much money do you file, and so that's kind of where we stand.
No, I'm glad you brought that up, since that's exactly what we want to hear. We do look at everything, and like we said, we do look at everything in order to understand the order of alleys and justice.
Inversible.
Impossible.
To Bob's point, there's more detail, about five pages into this budget.
Okay.
Where it's deep. About what the $44,000 is and what the surrounding rates are.
Okay.
There's a write-off.
Yeah, there is a piece that I need to add with me.
The rates are right here. It says, San Antonio is 43.73, Cohasset is 45, Norwalk 45, and it's going to be 52. So, 40 seems crazy.
I'm not saying I won't be back here in a year or two asking for a further increase. Really, without these people, we don't have a building department. We don't have a viable building industry in Situate that have...
We understand. Yes.
Okay. Questions for Mike?
Yeah, so let me understand, when you send an inspector out, do we charge the person whose ongoing business is being inspected?
Well, essentially, yes, you're paying for it through your permits. So all of this comes out of the total income that the department gets from...
Yeah, so where my mind is going is that if we need to pay these people more, maybe we need to charge more, the inspections.
It's like the life curve.
Right.
Well, it would be, you'd do that through upholding the fee rate on the permits.
Right.
That's, that's the way. And we did that, as I said, about, I want to say, three years ago. It might have been more. You recall that story?
Yeah, with Mo Brown was still here.
Yeah.
So, coming...
Or, sure.
So at any point, it can be accomplished by increasing the permitting.
Right, and I would certainly agree with that. One interesting thing, and I studied that a little bit while studying the rest of the pieces of this situation. Norwalk, I believe it is, has a substantially higher fee for commercial development. And commercial meaning anything like a multi-family, or it doesn't have to be like a store. It could be an apartment building or condominium, something like that. And I did do some numbers, and again, I don't have them with me, fortunately. But we could, we could generate substantially more income if we made some adjustments. And those adjustments wouldn't put us out of the ballpark with other surrounding...
Well, because if you want to build a house in Situate, you're going to have to pay what you're telling you you have to pay.
Well, that's true too.
I don't know, you know, I mean, I really doubt very much that, other than commercial developers who have their spreadsheets all out, that, you know, people, the permits become sort of like NASS, right? The permit phases.
A little bit. I mean, you know, for a big house, you're talking $8,000, $10,000.
And if it's a big house, if it's, we won't mention the biggest house that's being built right now.
It was more, it was more for that.
Well, I bet it was, but, but you know, when you're, when you're building a 3, 4, 12 million, whatever, house, then $10,000 is like...
Yeah.
Don't worry about it.
No, I, I...
So I guess I feel that probably it's on the lower end, it stings no more. But I'd rather doubt, I mean, if you decided you'd want to, you know, renovate your house and you need to go through all these inspections, that you're going to get annoyed, but you're not going to not do it. So I don't think it should be a big deal to bring our permit fees more in line with what it really costs to provide services. Yeah.
Well, I mean, that is true. It's not as though the department's losing money or we'll lose money if we institute this, this change. We projected bringing about $900,000 this year in our core costs, just our direct costs. I understand you have to pay for part of the heat of this building and things like that.
So I would say that, let's put together that proposal so the board can look at it sooner rather than later, so that we can make sure that we're paying equally appropriate fee so you can get the help to continue to perform, have your department perform.
Sure, great, I'd be happy to do that pretty much halfway there, so.
Okay.
We're a bit long done.
Yeah, let's get that out of us. Andrew?
That's great.
Susan? Good morning. Karen? Cantfield? Sorry. Nope, thumbs up, okay, she's got it. Okay, anything else? Nancy?
I just want to mention that permit fees are a general fund receipt. So it goes into the general fund receipt column, and then it's split 66, 34 for the revenue formula.
So permit fees do?
It's just a general fund receipt.
Right.
Do we, do we, could we take any action to make it a revolving fund receipt? So it stays, it can't...
Because it applies to the entire town. Some things you can and some things you can't. Bob and I had this discussion before.
Well, it doesn't mean that we can't, we somewhere still figure out that 66% is going to need to keep.
No, not if you're wrong with giving a little more money to the general fund either.
Yeah.
It's 90, 30%, that's 30%, so 15% gets you that.
Okay. You? Yes?
Susan Daly.
Susan.
Why couldn't you just have inspections be a separate line item and charge that to people? Like, if you have a mortgage initiative, mortgage may have inspection, that's just a line item and those costs. But again, a permit, why can't you just have that?
There are employees. And we can't do that with municipal finance.
We try and apply to projects, stop trying to apply to projects, Susan. Use the finance, we're trying to put quality and money.
There is, there is a piece of that that happens. If we have to re-inspect because you fail an inspection, we charge you separate additions.
For coming back in.
So 1064 split line.
At the beginning of the budget process, yes. Well, Nancy. Anything else, Bob?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm ready, and thanks for bringing that forth. And I think the board is very open to seeing those permitting adjustments, Bob, so.
I will work on that.
Be great. Susan, are you here for your economic development assessment? Look at you, come on up.
Look at me, I'm bad.
Nice to see you. I know, I saw that in the name, like, oh my gosh. She's back, which is awesome. Very happy to have you back. Don't worry, you guys.
Nice to see you. For those of you who don't know, this is Susan Daly. I'm the economic development commission. I don't really know much about the budget process, frankly, for this committee.
Pretty easy.
So, except Nancy was very helpful. I did present to the advisory board last week. They had a couple of questions, but I believe our budget is $46,000.
Level funded.
And we are trying to be a little bit more strategic as a committee and a little more proactive. And last year, we instituted a new process for people to apply for funds from EDC. And people can apply for money, Heritage Days, St. Patty's Day Parade, Lights Downtown. Folks come in and ask for money from us. And I, we kind of started realizing that we were being too reactive and not really proactive, which I think through more what, you know, economic development means. So Sue DePisa's done an awesome job. She actually had, you know, a couple of new folks on the committee who are actually working through a survey process to go down and survey all the businesses in town and residents to really understand what people want, what they want to see, where they find attractive, all those sorts of things. So that's sort of in the process, and I don't think there's any cost to that right now. But one of the things we did talk about was hiring a marketing firm to do a strategic plan for us, and we sort of capped that at about $10,000. And we were kind of down the road, and then because of this survey process, we sort of put brakes on that a little bit because we want to understand what's going to come out of that so we can have more, give more direction to the marketing firm on what, you know, our town culture is, or, you know, brand, that type of thing. And hopefully look for them to get a plan in place. So again, then we can implement a plan and be a little bit more proactive. So this year, so far, we have had three requests through our new process. The St. Patty's Day Parade actually requested $12,000. And we awarded $6,000 and wanted to see where we ended up at the end of our fiscal year to see if we could give them more money. The Situate Harbor Business Association requested the Lights Downtown, which brought a lot of fun being back, and we did that pretty quickly.
Oh, you did that? I didn't realize that. I would even say that.
I didn't do that.
Nice, really nice touch.
I heard, yeah, so...
And they're going to step you on, right?
Yes, so the gal who runs the new reel, she came in and she knew of a professional light company that actually will put them up, take them down, make sure that they're weather resistant or whatever, that they're going to last a little bit longer, and do a better job of putting them up or...
I thought they're going to stay up all year.
They are, but if, you know, something's broke or whatever, and you would suddenly take them out, they would, they maintain them.
Is that contract retained under the EDC?
I don't know. I don't know if it's a contract.
Okay. It's not a contract.
The EDC gave the money for it after they proved they paid for it.
Who they, oh, the harm business.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then Sister Cities requested just recently $4,550 for their film.
The film festival.
Film festival, which is really exciting. And so we did award them $4,050, but they wanted a raffle item and a law to do that, so we could not fund an extra five. So, so far, we've spent $19,550. That's great. So we have about $28,000 and change left. And hopefully people will learn more about what we're doing. And Sue's been talking to the new communications person to see about what some of the communications are. We have a community leaders forum that some folks probably know about. And so that's getting the word out a little bit more about what's happening in town. And so we have committees, there's seems to be a lot more collaboration. And that's been a really exciting thing, so. So I think that's it.
That's great. No.
Questions?
Your committee has evolved so much over the past, I want to say, probably since you went on as this is Cantfield. So it's been your five years, six years, eight years? Anyway.
107, I think it is.
Okay, there you go. So you've really evolved, you know, it's been great.
I know, I remember being on the advisory committee when the first EDC president.
Questions for Susan?
She's going to the Capitalism Academy Awards with Situate's American Convention, gave five.
Was that today announced? Was it announced today?
Five.
I was going to, I was just leaving Susan the note. Amber Galvin first, I wrote, but I'm working with the reel outside of my job.
Okay.
And the Situate raised producer of that film, Ben Leclerc, who was, grew up in Situate and is one of the co-producers of that Academy Award winning film. And we're going to make one of the upcoming screenings there a special event, and everyone will be invited, but it may include Hollywood stars reporting messages to Situate and panelists from the school and the DIA community, things like that. So I'll make sure we get appropriate announcements to the channel.
Do you need me?
All right, you guys can take that side.
Sorry.
Got it, why?
Does anybody else have any additional questions?
I'm sorry.
Karen Cantfield?
Just, I wanted to share a fun fact, which Nancy can back me up on. In 2021, the combined meals and room occupancy tax revenue was $393,000. In 2023, $587,000. So people are coming to town and they are spending money, and, you know, the trend has been upwards, but that was a really big jump, and I just wanted to share that. And a big thank you goes to the EDC. And I think that the, the plans for the next six months are really exciting, and I think will make a really, you know, really keep the momentum going. So, thanks, Susan.
Thanks, Sue DePisa. I don't know, I just...
So thank you to you all, and so, you know, good luck. Thank you. I have one question. Do you have to turn down any of the people that are applying?
Occasionally, we question, well, like, for instance, on St. Patty's Day, they asked for 12 grand.
Oh, yes, and you did.
Last year, the cultural committee came and they asked, I think, for, I forget what it was, four grand, and I think we ended up giving them one grand.
Okay.
So, you know, they really have to justify that amount of money. The light situation was such a big deal for so many people, and that's why we really felt strongly about doing that, because that has come up constantly. In fact, we did award lights to the cultural committee, and they ended up not working really well. And so that was just, it took all those old legs down. And we knew that we had to get professional lighting, and that's why that was such a big...
I can replicate that in a worse situation as well.
You know, hopefully, I mean, I think that's the plan eventually, so. You know, hopefully, I, I mean, I think that's the plan eventually, so, um, you know, things move forward in North Cituitch, meeting green bushes, that.
Yeah. It's all the fun thing going.
Exactly.
And there's other villages, so, maybe it's a PSA for the other villages to apply.
Right, well, North Cituitch does, they come to all our meetings.
Oh, wow.
So, and actually, uh, Suzie is, um, friends of North Cituitch, she's the secretary of the EDC, so.
Right.
Um, so, you know, the other village that gives sort of, are getting more and more.
Well, thank you.
Anyway, thank you very much.
And if anybody knows Sterling Brown's coming back to town, I think we need to show him around. Just let me know, I'd be happy to be the escort.
Hi Anne Marie.
Hello.
How are you?
Hi, thank you.
Great to see you.
Glad to be here.
I think our budget is in our backup, yeah.
It's not in our book. Um, page, page thirty-four. Okay.
So we have a grade.
Last.
Thanks. You have some great, um, accomplishments over several years, so, why don't you, uh, cover some of those?
I will, sorry, keep it brief, uh, but so happy to be here and to share some accomplishments of Cituitch, that's our prevention coalition. Um, back at the end of September, we ended our ten-year grant, amazing, isn't it? I know, I can't believe I've been talking about this a lot, but it's, uh, it's been wonderful.
You're still not tired?
I'm not, I get excited, and when I look at the bullet points, it gets, gets me excited to share with you guys, so, um, so ten years of the CBC Drug Free Communities Grant ended, and some, due to some savings that we accumulated over that ten-year period, partly because of public programming and, and a little, you know, periods of understaffing, we had some money left over, um, and so we've been able to extend that, so currently recovered through the end of this fiscal year, which was a nice, uh, bonus. Um, but what happens with that grant is they, that you're expected to, over the years, demonstrate your sustainability by getting your partners in prevention to take on some of that work, hopefully get your fiscal agent, who in our case is the, um, Cituitch, to assume the budget for the work, for the continuation of the work, so that's sort of the reason you have a FACS budget for you. Um, we, and we've only had to do this one other time in between two five-year grants, um, and just for, um, historical context, that went through pretty, uh, through this process and the advisory board review and town meeting very well, um, because many community members really value the work that we've done, the collaborative work we've done for the year, so, um, that's why it's, it's a big increase from the past, because in the past, the budget request has been zero. Um, so that's kind of why, why we're here, uh, but over the years, we've accomplished many, many things, the bullets that are in your packet are really talking about the, the most recent year, actually, and some really wonderful games we've achieved with youth substance use, um, many all-time lows, um, actually, it rates a few substance use, which is really the name of the game, really trying to prevent problems, um, and tragedies really, and are going to be many adults, so I'm really proud of that work. Uh, when I reflect on the ten-year milestone, my ten years as a town employee, um, was this past December also, I am most proud of, really all like the, I always get tilted, but, some of the, um, the policy changes and collaborations that we've, that have started here in Cituitch because of our work, um, that, something that we can all be very proud of, um, just having a recovery center start here in Cituitch.
And you so recognize and well recognize that state free leadership.
I know, so, and it's, but it's not about me, like, the, honestly, the thing I'm so proud of is that what we have accomplished as a community, and that we'll be here long after the grant's gone, long after, um, um, here before you, which is really, um, happy, not sad, but, uh, I, I get emotional thinking about it, so we, um, were able to mobilize the local recovery community to establish a recovery center here in Cituitch, and I'm happy to, on that board, which is separate from all this work, um, but I volunteered there, and we were just awarded the grant to open second recovery center based on the amazing work we've done at Cituitch, yeah, it's going to be in North Wayman on Route Three A, and just really.
Well, congratulations.
Started here, it's amazing, right, and another major milestone that's mentioned in my, in my doled it list is that, um, here in Little Old Cituitch, we started, uh, back in two thousand seventeen, I believe, with Chief Stewart, an overdose follow-up program, again, it happened through this, like, having this model of collaboration, and then people at the table, we were the first community, possibly in the country, absolutely in the county and the state of Massachusetts, to follow up at residents' homes after, after a non-fatal overdose, or after fatal overdose, so we, that was a partnership with FACS, People in Recovery, and Police Officers, and that started here and has evolved into this major program that called the County Outreach, so now every community is in the county, copy the Cituitch model, and they do that, so like, lives are being saved, so I get carried away with my enthusiasm, but there's some pretty remarkable things like, like that. Um, so the budget before you is for, um, one hundred and four thousand dollars, and essentially that is for staff, which is me, you get me, uh, for my position, uh, into the future, and the rest of the, um, that's a little over sixty percent of the budget request, and the remainder is really some, um, small contract amounts where we pay for our website, we pay for some small printing, you know, resource books and things like that, but really what we've done since, um, the pandemic really is, is pivot to do more things online and remotely, so, um, creating videos, making things available to people who are too busy to come to meetings, and really a lot, a lot of work on communications. Um, so creating products that can get pushed out through social media, that can be watched on demand, LinkedIn is the next frontier, but we're doing all the traditional things we've always done with parent skills groups, kid support groups, uh, partnering with the schools on evidence-based curriculum, all, all the normal things, um, but really trying to make sure stuff's accessible, even if you can't come to the meeting, maybe if you don't know who I am, that it's kind of worked it by your fingertips, um, so it's sort of like two-point-O, um, so that's why we propose that we can do this with one staff person and some, you know, contracted tools and help, um, which I'm excited about, and then, um, there's another piece of the budget that's significant, it's twenty-five thousand dollars for the Interface Referral Service, um, that's another thing I'm really proud of, um, we adapted it with, uh, former state representative Jim Cantwell as part of a pilot program, and what that is, is a mental health referral service, so, I say that in case people are watching, um, it's available to all residents of Cituitch, all ages, so it's not a school service, it's for any, um, resident, and including Cituitch School, um, students and families from Boston have, have access to our resource for this, and it is a mental health match service, so you can call up and explain, it's not a hotline, but a helpline, you can call up and explain your need, I'm dealing with an eating disorder, I'm going through a divorce, I have, uh, me and my spouse have her phlegm substances, whatever the need is, and then match you with a provider who accepts your insurance, who is accepting new patients, which is the key, um, and who meets your other needs, so the, the counseling need, um, and you know, proximated Cituitch online versus in person, all those things that you might share, and they find you somebody, uh, so lots of people, when you try to do that on your own, by looking at your insurance card, or asking a primary care, or a friend, oftentimes you make that phone call, the provider is full, right, they have a waitlist, or they don't even have time to call back, so, Interface Referral Service, um, and perhaps I can come some other time to share more about that, but it's a, um, wonderful service that we've enjoyed for about eight years in Cituitch, and the FACS grant has paid for that, so we had extra monies, so all these years I've been using the FACS grant to cover that, I've included that in the proposal for, um, the next fiscal year, but I think it's something to think about as a kind of cost of doing business as a municipality, because it's so well-used.
Do you interact with Erica?
We do, yeah, and she uses it all the time, yeah, she uses it all the time, um, and I just think about, it's a great parlay, actually, I think, like, the next, you know, we've been out this a while, we've tweaked our programming, um, a little bit over the years, we know what works, and what people, people want to participate in, what we need, um, so I feel really confident about what, you know, the work ahead, uh, but I do think there's opportunity, certainly we're collaborating on behavioral health stuff with the term social worker and the part-time help we have, but I do think there's possibility for, you know, some regionality going forward, and some collaboration with other, I already collaborate, um, with our, you know, my peers in other communities, but possibly even looking at behavioral health collaboration, um, in Cituitch, you know, with, um, other communities, sharing resources, sharing humans, um, and things like that, so, um, we're, we're all kind of small communities with similar problems, so, um, the possibility of like formalizing that in the future, I think is, is not a bad idea. My expectation is like this sort of a budget is about like a baseline to do the work, and if you wanted to start doing more work, maybe do that with other communities, could have it more in Marshfield, you know, um, something like that, like we do with shared social workers, so.
Yeah.
I'm always thinking about that.
Good, yeah, thank you for everything, I mean, the work you do is amazing, and it's, yeah, you've just done so much over the past ten years, do you have a budgetary question? So will there be another round of grant submission?
Great question, so that plan ends, yeah, so that, that was a two, five-year grant max opportunity, um, but you learn a lot for, you know, certainly about, about the, through grant reporting and, um, data goals and things like that, so.
I wonder if that settlement we have in our.
That's how this is going to be supported.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so this will be, so, um, but, but it's still absolutely possible to, uh, continue to apply for additional grants, um, not that particular grant opportunity that ends after ten years, no matter what. Um, so, but now we're sort of in the game, so we're sort of set up to compete, certainly through state grants with the Bureau of Substance Addiction Services at state level, and, um, federal grant opportunities like this one, for sure. Um, but, um, also, two years ago, there was, uh, the Attorney General settled with, um, pharmaceutical companies, with, um, municipalities, as you know, in Massachusetts and other states, um, so Cituitch is in receipt of fif- for fifteen years, we were receiving funds from, um, the opioid settlement, um, which is great, which will pay for a good chunk. Yeah, actually, uh, the majority is like this budget, um, but I think also, as a community, we should look at all the needs, I'll be, you know, substance really the needs when we start dispersing that money, um, so like, I'll create a task force and create people, maybe do a community wide survey, and they can get, you know, refresh kind of what our, kind of opioid situation is. We benefit greatly from having the recovery center located here, because all that is free, um, and, and it's primarily Cituitch people using it, so for dog communities, but people are mostly, it's not like a wood, so, that's a real boon to Cituitch, you know, it's almost like a free department. It's awesome, um, but there might be other needs, um, so, um, I participate in calls with, uh, my peers and colleagues from other communities that are a little bit possibly had with the opioid funds, I was at a call, uh, last week, um, some, some communities had free, like RFPs, where community members could apply to, you know, request some of the money, and, or, if, you know, the Wayman doesn't have much of a survey, things like that, Hingham has it, our, our request processed, um, so I want to be absolutely grateful about that, and use our same model of bringing all the people together and kind of assess, like a community assessment of what the actual needs are. Um, I feel, I feel pretty capable of directing that, and, um, it's time, time to look at it all, and so.
Right, move forward to that.
Any questions, anytime.
Uh, any questions for Anne Marie? Oh, we have some more. Interface, you burrows service.
Interface.
Interface.
Interface, yeah.
I'm like, interface, they need different.
No, no, interface, and it's based out of Liam James, College of Newton, it's a really remarkable, um, service, really personal, and so.
I know, it's very much needed, very much needed, for almost anybody.
Absolutely, and one of our goals a couple of years ago.
I need to advertise it here.
Uh, so, need to know, we, uh, we have, um, flyers, there's flyers at town hall, occasionally we'll get, um, I work with, um, Bob Park to send, uh, blast out, um, to town employees and town, and occasionally we'll do kind of like a little refresh of where the resources, but it's on the town website, from the Cituitchbacks.org website. We have, at the senior center, they came to the healthcare recently, we have, I've built take ones, and flyers everywhere, um, worked with Seth from SNTV two years ago to do little PSAs, but, but still, if, you know, I want everyone to know about it, so, there's always work to do, so this, this is one of those opportunities, really.
Yeah.
Uh, it's really great, and, you know, confidential, usually you get a match within two weeks, they follow up with you, see if you like the match, it's really pretty awesome.
Great.
It's really, really great, and we collect, we get a aggregated report packs, like, um, I can summarize it at the end of the time, but twice a year, the service provides the contractor, um, with an update, um, about what were the request types around, and the primary is anxiety, um, and then it will tell you kind of the, uh, some demographic information, so the age of the people. One last thing, a goal a couple of years ago, partnering with, um, Erica Sores, the town manager of social services, was to diversify, who was using it more to do a lot of work on outreach, um, and we, for the first time, had more adults than youth seeking counseling, so, um, proud of that, it, because it was just really getting them the information.
Right.
Um, and schools is sort of that embedded, you know, there are counselors that will give them the card and information, so, um, we, we just, the community allows you to challenge it. Um, the effort.
No doubt.
Oh, thank you.
All right, anything else?
Nancy, I just want to let Anne Marie know, um, that Drew Schilling had said that the multi-community public health grant, that they're, that the additional social worker that were shared between local communities. Yep. They were seeking a community health needs assessment through that grant, and at special town meeting in the fall, we appropriated our twenty thousand, which would be our share as that comes forward. Oh, awesome. So I just wanted to let you and Anne Marie know that. Okay. You might want to talk to her and see how that's going, yeah, make sure that you're included in that.
That's amazing, I absolutely will, thank you.
Thanks, Nancy.
Where it all happens.
I know.
I know.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anne Marie.
It's great to see you.
You too.
All right. Good night. All right, next, Jody, how are you?
Good.
How are you? Good, this is Jody McDonald, our archivist, archivist, archivist. I know, I know. She does all the hard work downstairs.
Um, I haven't met Susan, so hello, um, I just want to give a little background, um, we're going to talk about the property care, so we have three rooms downstairs, um, two of them are mainly town, um, departments, um, short-term storage, where they're required to save them for a certain amount of years, and then they get destroyed, but one of the rooms is our truly historic stuff. Um, and, um, we have documents back to the sixteen hundreds, so, this is, I mean, it's, um, we have, we're open four hours a week. Um, we have two, uh, two volunteers that are long-term, um, and we do a lot of, um, we're pretty active, so I just decided to bring, um, these are the books that have been, um, written since I started, which was about five years ago. Um, we have some local historians that come in and use the resources, so there's a lot of action that's happening. Even last week, I got, uh, an email from attorney, Assistant Attorney General in Tennessee, looking for some information about our early government, so, um, and I actually, right, a citation from our now lieutenant governor, um, uh, Henry Driscoll, about, um, some, we returned a.
Well, why don't you read it?
Uh, we returned a sixteen hundred, um, someone brought in a gravestone from the sixteen hundreds, and it was, we weren't able to identify it, and we did a lot of research, and we found that it belonged to Salem. So, we, um, so she wrote, "I read with interest the article in the Salem News regarding the gravestone which was discovered in Cituitch, Mass. I want to encourage people who find pieces of our history to return them, we appreciate efforts made to capture the exact epitaph on the stone on the Charter Street. These little details will give help to people who, to know how important these items are one hundred years later, it's actually a couple hundred, and that they have to the city of Salem, I want to thank."
Oh, very nice, congratulations, yeah, make sure that doesn't go in the archives, make sure we probably explain that, that's what we're going to file downstairs. Salem, we'll never be able to find it again.
So, a year and a half ago, um, I asked, well, I had the, um, there was a opportunity to have the state roving archivists come and assess our environment, um, which was a free program, um, but it required the select board to, um, approve of it, and so Tony approved. So I'm just coming back to report on what that, what that report was, I think you got probably a percent.
We did.
Too big to remember. Um, so, um, I just, so my, so I just wanted to talk about my response to that report, so, um, there's five topics, um, I created some, um, collection policies, I used chat GPT to, to get my policies.
Okay.
And, um, then, one, so that was the first one, second one is to enhance security, so I tightened up a lot of measures, um, I restricted some things, um, and so that's kind of pretty set. Um, the third thing was to implement a collection management system and digital repository, so we have a lot of, um, we have a database, but it, it's not, it's pretty weak, um, I have an IT background, so I'm kind of working on developing our, a database for our, um, historical part. Um, I've done a lot of digitizing, and I've put a lot of stuff up on the website under our archives for people, there's a lot of reference material if they want to come and look online, if they're from far away, whatever, and then they can call us. So I've worked on that. So I've worked on that, um, so we've got some more work to do, it's hard to do it four hours a week when you have volunteers, but that, but what else is that?
Finally, you're not, you're not just working four hours a week.
No, I am.
Good, all right, you too.
Okay, so the fourth one is improve management and uh explore alternate locations for archives, which I noticed the next item on the agenda. Um, we really need a climate-controlled environment, so if all these documents really deserve a special space.
So you'd say that's probably your largest need.
That's probably the need.
It's not, it's not library.
The library wants historical.
Okay.
Um, and these are town documents, so I follow another town clerk, so he's near her, there's a lot of vitals that, vital records, he knows, right? So I don't know if that's part of your plan for um reuse gates, but it would be great to have.
Question. I know. Yes, yeah. Next to the other. How much space would you need?
Not a lot, I mean, if you come down and look at that one room, that's what people behind.
Like, could you make a W P A building climate control? You, nobody really uses that anymore. Because the heat doesn't work.
Everything's possible.
Yeah.
Yes.
The heat doesn't work, so you definitely have a climate control.
People do need that.
No, I know, but there are plenty of unique places now, like people use, anyway, we don't need to discuss it, but I mean, I think there are spaces in town that we could look at.
So you have to think that the town clerk has to have access to, so she, it needs to be in her domain too, so, yeah, whatever. Okay, and then the uh, the last one is pursuing um continuing ed, which I have done, and I intend to continue to take my online classes. So that's my.
And thank you for taking care of all of our treasures, um, that book that you spoke about a couple of years ago, remember you said?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Is that still here?
No, it's still here.
Okay.
Then COVID, I decided to keep it. Yeah, we have a sixteen fifty-three document that we have preserved down, they're incinerated, so if you go down there, you'll see that there's pipes.
Yeah, I got a visit, I mean, to me, you weren't there, but I did get a tour.
It was my four hours.
It's amazing.
Yeah, so we've had two leaks.
I know, it's plastic all over.
Yeah, and and your five years, but they are in these safes that we lock up and they're fireproof safes.
Couldn't um, couldn't we apply CPC under the historical segment to do something for the archivists?
I know the why you couldn't.
Yeah.
Yes, you definitely could, I mean, that's probably where I'd go for my sort, but where.
Well, it seemed to me as though, depending on how much stuff in my home, that you prioritize as to what needs to go into, for example, a fireproof, waterproof
Yeah.
Right.
safe, yeah, that, you know, wouldn't necess- necessarily be a building, and it's not necessarily the the ultimate solution, but, you know, on a an interim basis, um, because I also understand, you're right, that the town clerk has to have a certain amount of access.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's weird, it's not, I I would definitely go for the CPC money, but it's weird.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, uh, Mary Porter did a great um archival room, I don't know if you've seen it.
Historical society.
Yeah, she gave me, actually, a talk to her. But it's just.
So want to write um the chess parts?
Yeah. Four months.
Oh, yeah. Any questions for Jody? Karen, Kenfield?
I don't have any questions, but Jody, I just wanted to make note that of how much progress you've made on the recommendations that you received, it's it's really great that you took that and used it as a blueprint to to get all those, all those boxes checked, it's great.
Thanks.
And I I agree, we gotta, we gotta find a way to secure this stuff, it's a, it's really be, just a nightmare and such a tragedy if we lost some of these documents.
Yeah. Navy conventions, the fact you did that, it's great, it would be so great for us to search later, such a nerd to think that that was so important, I saw that, thank you. Makes everyone's life so much easier.
Right.
Thank you.
Karen, just one last question, um, if this roving archivist has he or she seen much worse, much better, where do we follow her? Roaming around the Commonwealth, looking where other people have their, their documents and how they're organized?
Um, I think it said, you know, I didn't bring it, but I think it said that she thought we did, and I, I should say that Benny Foster before
Oh, yes.
Was the person who did all most of it.
No, and we're not talking, Benny Foster was great.
Yes.
Uh, and you're just building on who.
Right, and so I have the technology experience over her.
Yes, yes.
Got the knowledge, but I think she, she said that we we fall pretty high on the list of of, yeah, what we've done, what we've preserved over the years, yeah. So you'll, if you look, I think the first page is how that document.
I did scan it, but I wasn't.
Yeah, been a while since I got it, but we did, did well, did really well, yeah.
Question. Well, thank you, Jody, good to see you.
Yep.
And thank you for all your work, and I, let's, they're gonna put it on our list to find a spot for this.
They'd be a patient standing on the floor.
Oh, the lobby will try to get in here forever?
It's not bad, huh?
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
Sorry, Jody, sorry.
I, it's a few questions. She's been so patient, so thank you.
Okay, now you're gonna hear about the adaptive reuse plans, Jody. Feasibility study.
She's gonna chance to come back or just speak slowly.
Yeah, we can take a slowly get in here, please.
What time is Bob coming, because the doors are locking a little bit.
He's here, I mean, seriously, I'll be here.
I just want to make sure he's not off.
Okay, thank you.
I snagged one of your comments.
No, it's like locked him into the archive, but.
Yes.
I just want to make sure he's here and it's awesome.
He is, he is.
So, um, I'll just start with with that, that um, some community contact grants, if you're available. Um, I talked to Jim about what he wanted to potentially apply for, old needs came up. We asked Cory if she'd be willing to write the grant, because Cory is a super awesome grant writer, if you want to lose a grant, I'm a girl. In writing, we're not getting it, um, but everything that Cory applies for, she gets most of them.
That's great.
So even though this has nothing to do with foster resources, you know, our pet feeding, or here's, these plans happen, and new things happen, and all these things happen, she made a great application, and the town was awarded sixty-seven thousand dollars in a planning grant. Um, at the October special town meeting, we put up our eight thousand dollar, eighty-five hundred dollar match for that grant, and um Cory and I put together, uh, mostly Cory put together the R F P for adaptive reuse feasibility study, looking at housing, because old needs, you only need two things, either housing or municipal use. Um, so the R F S was issued, we had uh eight firms that provided proposals, so eight of these little things to look through, and Jim, Cory, myself, and I think Laura also looked through those, and then your handouts, the physical handouts, this page showing the scores that came forward from those. Um, the two high-scoring firms were uh Turkey Brown, who did the original feasibility studies of old needs before it became a school project, uh, a school, a new school project, and then uh Doran Woody, remember, your um bar, bar B H and A, who did senior center design, so both firms are very familiar with that area, very familiar with old gates. So we knew we couldn't go wrong with either one, and we interviewed both firms. It uh, it's found that uh B H and A, Barge McHenry archetype was uh more prepared, had a real, a little sense that they got a plan to move forward. So we reached out to them to negotiate a price, and the price that you have for you is that negotiated price, which is seventy-five thousand dollars, which is within our budget. Uh, what the, you have their response, which was small reading, but very comprehensive of, that they have experience in conversions of old schools with housing into creating housing, um, and they would bring multiple different players to the table, they provided these three different scenarios, whether a complete tear down, keeping the facade and working around it, or an addition to leaving the sting, um, school, looking at trying to make it affordable for a developer or a partnership to come in for a developer to do that. Old needs isn't as easy as a normal conversion of a school, because there are other uses on the site, so we would need to probably maintain ownership, and this would be a lease. So, and we don't want to tear down A, building A, because that's the recreation part, we have senior center right there, so it's a little bit of an object. Uh, but they weren't put off by that, so we're really interested if Dorsey's fit to award this contract, to see what comes out of this. Um, and whether this is going to be a viable solution for that building moving forward, and also to address the housing prices in Massachusetts in our own need for housing stock that is affordable. Um, and it, I don't, it wasn't required that it be senior housing or any other type of housing, just houses. So it could be either or, it's a nice area for senior housing because of having senior center, the school, and um Boston and central housing, but it's also a great place for small families, if you have two or three bedrooms, because you're right next to recreation and all the fields. So it works either way, so it's going to be an interesting, interesting thing to study.
Nancy, will they be looking at um building A at all, or the Jermaine Center at all, that we didn't complete and molested, go around of this property?
They'll look at it, um, the question would then be, what would we do with recreation if we moved them out?
No, I'm not suggesting that we move them out, you know.
There was some discussion about the second floor of A.
Right.
But the question then is, how do you parcel it out? And that may not be reasonable, maybe that's another discussion for having space for archives on that second floor.
Yeah, no.
I love that for you, Jody.
That's a good point, yeah, no, it's a good point, I just.
And they will kill me for this, but.
I'm so glad we're moving forward with this, I just, um, I don't want to continue to look at that property in silos, you know, and we keep going back to it time and time again. If we can just take care of it, and save time, please, find a way sometime. Um, I think it would be better for all of us as taxpayers, because ultimately we'll be paying less, instead of kicking a can down, ruining the suburb, so. I don't, I mean, I, it probably doesn't do anything with this particular contract, but I don't know if there'll be um an opportunity for future discussions, um, should the board award this contract department, um, to add that in, you know, and obviously I'm sure it would require additional costs, but it might be something that we'll want to consider, instead of just looking at just the housing fees.
Yeah, and we could certainly have that as part of our kickoff meeting, uh, especially where they are so well versed with what is up there currently, and they've been involved
And it was like, yeah, those persons with Joel Dooling.
Yeah, and the conversion of um, or the accessibility improvements to the the Vetty Memorial Gym, they really know their way around that, they're all right. And so it, it, it was nice to see both them and Turkey Brown um apply for this, or putting their proposals, because this is somebody who understands Situit. Understands this specific area as well as this building. Um, plus they have uh the knowledge of the different butters and the traffic, which all have to be part of something, all part of the study.
Question for you too, have you uh ever been into the area within gates um by the gym that has not been renovated? Have you walked down?
I've had the full tour.
Yeah, okay.
Including the pantry.
No, but have you gone over like where the locker rooms weren't done, and where the big um, these just cycling over there, that one wasn't done, have you been in there? I just recommend that you go walk if you really haven't seen it.
You mean the old site and the rest of the whole that, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the locker rooms that have pipes like coming out of the.
The first meeting.
And the place.
I've been there.
Okay. I just want to make sure you're there. Yeah.
Yeah, I've been there before.
Any questions for Nancy?
No, I mean, Congress don't think Bar, Barton, they, they know the area, they know the players around here, they know where they are. Um, and I believe we have to fish and cut bait with this, you know, sooner rather than later, we just have to make a decision. You know?
Yeah, no.
I think so.
And this doesn't include spark outreach, so this isn't an asylum.
Right. Well, and I, I appreciate the fact that they're professional people, we can all have all of our ideas, but what about this, and what about this, and what about this, but they're the people who can say, well, you can do this, you can't do that, and we're going to need to know what it's going to cost. If we were to tear down a building, um, it could be a significant cost, and people have to be prepared for that, so, um, but we can't just leave it there the way it is and just let it rot.
And really, really want to partner with somebody?
Right, maybe take on that cross.
Right. So maybe like a lease for a hundred years for a dollar, kind of a situation.
Another private-public partnership like.
Or, so, yeah.
Okay, Karen, Kenfield, anything?
No, I'm just delighted that uh, that we're at this point, we're actually taking some concrete steps to find a solution, so, great work, thank you.
Susan, you have one more?
Oh, yeah.
Um, excited, thank you. All right, uh, do I have a motion? And thank Cory. Um, I'll move the select board award a contract for adaptive reuse feasibility study for the Old Gates School to Barge McHenry archetype of Boston Mass for seventy-five thousand dollars. Second, second by Karen Connolly, roll call vote?
Ms. Karen.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Mrs. Harrison.
Yes.
Mrs. Kenfield.
Absolutely.
Ms. Conlon.
Yes. Awesome, thanks, Nancy. Okay, so we just have a couple of um business things to take care, first is um a discussion of vote regarding um awarding a mass lottery keynote monitor at the Sand Hills General Store. So this seems to be fully within uh state law in order to do that, um, so the Sand, Sand Hill General Store is getting actually keynote monitor assigned to it. Sure.
No, I thought you had a question.
Oh, did you have a question?
No, because I don't know how to play keynote, I don't, no, I don't.
Motion?
Move to the slide board, uh, approve the installation of a keynote monitor at the existing keynote, to go agent to display the game at Sand Hill General Store, one sixty, current.
Moved by Andrew Goodrich.
Second.
Second by Susan Harrison, uh, roll call vote?
Ms. Karen.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
And Kenfield.
Yes.
Ms. Conlon.
Yes. All right, next on our agendas, we have some one-day liquor licenses to approve. Uh, one for the River Shed for the Storm Rider Festival, oh, this is the thing that, do this get delayed?
It did.
Or is this a, a different one?
I think it.
They're gonna delay.
Well, this is those.
I think you were gonna go with it.
I was, I could have.
Yeah, all right, there you go, it's gonna be on the twenty-seventh from six to ten P M at J R Hall.
You're not available. Reschedule.
Um.
Yeah, can we reschedule?
There's also one uh for the H Coal Club, uh, for a public event at the Root at four oh five First Parish Road, to be held on one twenty-five, twenty-four, between six and eight thirty P M. And another one for the H Coal Club for the Cook Club Series at Kitchen Spaces and Interiors at Fifty Country Way on January thirtieth from six to eight thirty. Um, do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the uh one-day liquor licenses for River Shed for Storm Rider Festival, H Coal Club for public event, H Coal Club for Cook Club Series, and what is H Coal Club, does anyone?
That's a state character that's in town, but we can't, please answer it to the public, sure, it requires a one day.
I thought it was a special club.
Oh.
It says club.
Yeah, that's the name, remember.
Okay, thank you. Did you, you remember, Erin?
Yes.
Okay, moved by Karen Connolly, second.
Second.
By Andrew Goodrich. Roll call vote?
Ms. Karen.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Mrs. Harrison.
Yes.
And Kenfield.
Yes.
Ms. Conlon.
Yes. And for the record, all the backup um, uh, appropriate documents are, are in our backup.
Yes.
Um, so lastly, um, we have liaison reports, um, however so brief, um, Karen?
Yeah, just quickly, um, I know that there's going to be a lot of work continuing to be done up here at forty-four, but it's going to be out of public view for the most part. Uh, but just to let people know that that all of the permitting is probably going to take about eight to twelve, eight to twelve months. Uh, with permits and approvals expected by um spring twenty twenty-five, so this is the, the whole issue of, you know, getting all the permits, and it is a waterfront uh, environment down there, but um, they're moving along, and the, the chair of the committee. And the chair of the committee and a couple of the committee members continued to outreach with the various committees in town, including the diversity ethnic committee, who really appreciated being included and updating them. So I wanna thank that committee for continuing to work to keep this, well, it's quite a period to keep it communicating with people. And the, I haven't been to a meeting recently, but we did award a design engineering contract for Coal Parkway.
Oh, good.
Yes. Considering it was a pool last week or two weeks ago, so.
Good timing.
Yes, so they've actually started to work down there to do all the measurements and the site, all that stuff, so.
Do we have that out where, do we have that information out there anywhere, on our website or anything? Because we get so many questions about Coal Parkway and people not really understanding that we are moving forward on it.
You know what, I'll look, I think we do. I think it's probably on the coastal resources.
Okay.
I've heard of Reddit on time.
But, you know, sometimes you just have to remind people.
Yeah.
Right. Now, it wouldn't be a bad idea, once in a while, if you're a liaison to the committee that had website with a lot of information on it, to just say to people, oh, by the way, you know, if you're interested in following, you can get it on this particular website. Because it gets, stuff gets buried.
It does.
You know, it's just, it's there, not always easy to find it. So that's why I probably work really hard to say.
Two important issues. Andrew, what do you think?
Nothing to do with that.
I have the board, Calican, had their first meeting, the new board committee. And then we are actually doing a slide visit of the whole committee, which we will post on the agenda, and that is this coming Sunday. And then we also have another meeting coming up on the thirtieth first. So they all run their casts and, um, maybe, and they've got a lot of work to do.
Excellent.
We're, again, we can have historic buildings, as well as the land and the conservation and the water access and trails. So, and also looking at the septic. So Kevin Calley is actually looking into the septic, which we, one thing, which I will let the board know, we did find out that it was a full septic, it's not assessable. It was put in in the seventies, so there's even a possibility that it could, we could test it and it'll be okay.
Oh.
So they're working on that as well. So I did wanna mention that because the whole, um, the money with, you know, creating the parking lot was on hold. We had that, we have that grand money for, to do that as a talent and ask them to put on hold because the whole layer when we put the septic, so the septic, where to test, test, we could, we'll go around that fairly quickly.
Well, and even better news too, that depending on that, you can now apparently put parking on top of septic systems, which you didn't used to be able to do. So that's, that's kind of a good thing.
Right.
Yeah.
That's, but still to be determined, but it is looking, it's definitely not assessable. And it's like, looking, it's looking good. So I did wanna update on that.
And those are my liaison. I did go to MMA conference, that was great this past weekend, so.
Yeah, a lot of good information.
Excellent. Yes, Karen, did you have? Karen, Canfield, any reports?
Nope, I was just gonna update on bylaw, we did that already.
Yes.
You did it already?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gotcha. You get credit for more to having him too. I should have.
I was there, yeah.
Yes, we're co, um, co-parenting.
Co-parenting.
Co-parenting now.
They're in good hands, it's a great, it's a great committee.
It is. And I just, you know, we had a D E I meeting last night, so that committee continues to move forward, you know, create votes. They're gonna reassess their goals for twenty twenty-four. Just, I would, I am gonna remember that they come up for us with those new goals. Just because I think different issues are popping up and they have some new members, so they're gonna sort of just readjust. So they're gonna discuss that the next meeting. But lots of great things taking place, that's what we learned about the American fish taking place at the rail, so that's exciting as well.
Yes.
And they also, I thought it was great, they took time to meet with Kathy, our communications director, about, you know, equity and our communication strategy. So they learned a lot and had a lot of recommendations and Kathy has a lot on her plate, so I'm gonna give her some good direction. That's right. I'll just get sort of happy to have her. So we lastly, correspondence, Susan?
Yeah, we have some correspondence. We received another, a letter on water sewer usage. And this gentleman has a large family and many people that visit him in the summer. He has, and uses a lot of water as well. And is looking for a solution on the high water bills. So I think that has, we've discussed that at length, and we are working toward figure, updating our policy. We also got a correspondent from Dave Ball from Cedar Point Association regarding the seawall, expressing appreciation for, when the folks from Cedar Point Association attended our meeting. But also, you know, inquiring as to how, how quickly things are gonna get done. And would like an update, and he actually gave us a date that he wants us to respond to him by January thirtieth as to what the next steps on the project is. Although we have responded when the folks come, so I don't know if we should have to respond to that. That's my personal opinion.
Happy to do that.
But I will note that he included pictures from the last storm. So there's definitely been some deterioration of the wall. And we're doing what we can do.
So.
Thank you.
But they are, they are good pictures and they're very, I mean, we did get some very high water, so I'm not surprised that's a wall fail. Let's see, did we, oh, we also had, I got one from the Mass Office of Disability. We were in their newsletter with a picture of the gangway, because they gave us a grant for twenty-seven thousand dollars. Remember the one we had, the lieutenant governor and the company?
Are you here, don't remember?
It was a picture from that, so we made, we made their newsletter, so that was great. And then also, there was a Boston Globe article that we received with Cory Miles. So we are quoted in it.
She's very diplomatic.
She's diplomatic, although she did also follow up with us to say she was misquoted by the Globe or taken out of context, which, you know.
She hasn't been misquoted, believe me.
I don't know.
Yeah, no.
Anyway.
She's not very intelligent.
I thought it was, I thought it was a great job and, you know, talking about the seas are coming for coastal homes, which they are, so it's, there's. And there was also talk about that at MMA this weekend. It's, we're not the only town, there are a lot of towns struggling with these issues. So, but that is what I have.
And then one last thing.
Oh, one last thing.
It's in your packet, can you?
No, it's okay.
I should have looked at my packet. It's okay, it's okay. It's just a happy new year from Susie and Ray.
Okay.
To. Ray. Not as much detail, Mrs. Canfield, as we were hoping, but we'll get more details soon, yes. Are you done?
I did wanna just, on the Cedar Point, I did ask Jim, you know, how the well, how the wall fared over the weekend, and I guess Kevin Cafferty was out there looking at it today, so hopefully we'll get an update on that soon.
He did, I'll forward you an email, because I did ask Kevin that same question. So I'll forward you an email, Karen, I'll forward it to the rest of the board.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I did get an update from Kevin exactly, because the engineers came out there to take a look at it. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Andrew, you have one more?
Yeah, I had some, I should have forwarded several on the board, but some local commissioners. United Church of Christ Congressional in Warwell, Thursday, February eighth, will be a housing justice forum. We'll be talking about all the different legislation that's up. And we'll learn more about what's happening, and this is in conjunction with Greater Boston, you know, the housing justice campaign, which is talking about just all the different housing initiatives that are happening in our states. We'll learn more, February eighth.
Okay. Great. All right, with that, we approved the meeting minutes from January nine. Moved by Mr. Goodrich, second.
Second.
By Karen Connolly. Roll call vote, those minutes?
Sure, Ms. Canfield, I'm sorry, Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Okay, so we are going to commence with the public session and move into executive session. The chair declares that the select board move into executive session pursuant to the purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategy and respect litigation. And I declare that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the initiating position of the select board in connection with this matter, and the board will not reconvene in open session. We will be discussing legal matter on this shellfish agriculture, agriculture, we're gonna get it. So I motion to move into executive session?
Second.
Second by Susan Harrison. And then, can you, do you wanna read the motion? Get to read that.
Move that the select board go into executive session pursuant to the purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. And I declare an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the select board in conjunction with this matter. The board will not reconvene in open session, shellfish agriculture. So roll call.
Yes, Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
All right, good night, everybody.[1796.94]